Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting this morning. This is a budget workshop meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you stand for the opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask you for guidance today to look at this process. Give us sometime the direction that we can be prepared to go along. As to be with our troops, all the people we didn't have.
Go on into place to lead in our place.
The presence of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five on the agenda this morning in the workshop is for discussion of departmental budget proposals. I believe we have an order set up and if I understand, the elections administrator will present their budget request first to county taxes as a collector. Second, special projects, 911 permits will be third. Commissioners will be fourth and road bridges will be fifth. So with that said, the elections administrator, if you'll make your presentation.
It's on page six. Page six in your notebook. Good morning. Under, I'm going to just go into kind of the way we did, the way we were doing it the other day.
Wait a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I've got two pages thick. Do you have any further enlightenment on which one I might want to look at?
You should have the one that Shelby has a pull-up right there.
That one's like this. This is this one.
This is last year's.
Well, we have last year's apparently and this year's. I'm the only one that's done. Is that for me to look at? Is that what you said?
I just put that one in there.
I don't know.
It just doesn't work.
Oh, I don't mind being dumb.
It wasn't personal.
Well, we have found this so far. So everybody will understand my complexity in looking at this. The first page is page six. It's got a number on it that I see as last year's page six. Second page is page six for this year also. Third page is page seventeen for some year.
Because that's your next presentation.
And, but it is page seventeen. And then the fourth page is also page seventeen for, I guess, another year. This is what we're faced with. Perhaps it's my fault since I'm the judge. Could have looked through this and probably put it in a different order. But nonetheless, that's why we're going to go with it. So this will be a budget workshop. We won't take any final action on anything, but we'll try to discuss everything that's covered in this and that's brought before us by the various parties. So with that said, the elections department estimated budget for last year is there for you to look at and compare with this year's budget request. And Karen, this is yours. I assume you're going to present the new one and not the old one. So with that said, take off.
All right. As I understand it, we're not necessarily talking about salaries today, so I'll skip right over that one.
I'm not sure we're going to talk about salaries any day.
But I do have some comments about that at the end. My, under my office expenses, last year I had it at $3,885. This year I have it at $3,185, so it's gone down a little bit. And I like to put in my request, and hopefully, yeah, y'all got the spreadsheet that I actually did. I tell you off to the side what I see those items being for, which is $1,500, just for miscellaneous supplies. I put shredding in there at $1,500 in case it comes up and I have, so that I have a place to take it out of my budget if I'm one of those that are included in the overall shredding or if I have to hire it out myself, because I do need to get the shredding done. I had it in my budget last year, but it's not been done yet. So I'm, it may get done this year and I can take that out or whatever.
Do you have a quote for that, Karen?
I have, just for, just for the number of boxes that I have. It was going to be about $700 or $800, I believe. Because I've got all the old elections, you know, and there's several, several boxes, so.
I need a copy of that quote, please.
Oh, it's not, it wasn't an official quote, I'm sorry. It was just over the phone. I was talking to someone because I wanted to know approximately how much I should put in my budget for that. And that's been, like I said, a year ago. It's actually last year when I was looking into it. And then the law book purchase, which we do every, I think it's every two years or perhaps every year. And that one costs $185. That's the elections law, law book, so that we can keep up with our election laws and have those in there.
It's not online?
It is included in, I'm sorry, it's not online, no sir. You can get to it online, but for me, having that hard copy there in front of me immediately, wherever I'm at, you know, to look at, yes, it's there online. If you've got a question, I apologize, I missed that. We do have it online also. But, I mean, in the position that I'm in, I mean, I feel like I need to be able to pull that up at any time. I have it, you know, I highlight, I tag it and everything so that I can immediately find what I need when I need it. And it just works better for me, but. And then the next one I have is telephone. Now, last year we only had $1,525 in there and I think I'm like right on target with that budget. But this year we're going to add in, I think my average bill is about $75 a month. That's usually what it comes out to, so I figured that in there. I added two more emails this year because we were required to give our employees an email when I think Heinblock came out and they wanted to email the each employee their pay stubs. So we added that, but those are only another $2 a month. So that makes that item $6 a month rather than $2 a month. And then the reason that one is increasing so much is because we really are looking into doing the countywide voting precincts. And the anticipation is that if we're able to get those done, and there will be public meetings on those, just in case anybody wants to know, I'm getting ready to get that set and it should be coming up pretty quickly because the public will have input on whether or not you want voting precinct, countywide voting precincts. So keep that in mind. But if we are able to go to countywide voting precincts, those computers are what we call e-poll books, will need to talk to each other. So, because they'll need to be, you know, literally be able to see at one voting place that a person has not already voted somewhere else, so that there's no duplicate voting. And so in other words, they'll need to be, they'll need to have internet access and be over a specific program over the air. And so to get those air cards, I checked in with the AT&T representative and through the sheriff's department budget, not budget, but department account. I talked to their representative for our account. And he said the air cards, they're free to get them. They're only a penny in off months. And so I would only be turning them on in months when we have elections. And in those months, they would be about $42 each. Now, that's more than what we were originally quoted, which was $37.50. But I talked to Robert and he said they always go up in his experience. So he's estimating they'll be about $42. So like in November, I'll need to turn them on. In May, I'll need to turn them on if we have any other special elections at any times. And so you have to consider that's 10 at that $42. So that's $420 approximately every time you turn them on. And that would be, that, those months would be the months I would get charged for those air cards. Otherwise, it will only be a penny.
What are countywide voting precincts?
What countywide voting precincts are is it allows people to go wherever they want and vote. In other words, you do not have to vote in the precinct that's set up for your specific where you live. Someone who lives in Rungy, maybe works in San Antonio, could actually stop at Fall City on their way in around San Antonio rather than having to go all the way to Rungy and vote. Or somebody who, you know, maybe votes in Kennedy, same scenario. Or maybe they're in Rungy doing their shopping that day, they can go to Rungy and vote. So, and it doesn't, or at least the way that I'm going to propose we do it. And I did send each of the commissioners a explanation of what I was looking at for countywide voting precincts and what that program looks like, at least in my eyes for now. Again, we have to have public meetings, so we'll get public input and see how that all comes out. But what I would anticipate doing currently, we actually have 15 voting precincts, but we've really only been opening 13 of those voting precincts. The last, when we opened most of our voting precincts, there's been some we've really combined hard to find. But my anticipation is perhaps to bring that down just to 10 because some of those voting, the places, polling places are literally within steps for maybe two or three miles of each other. And so it doesn't create any more voter impossibilities. I'm sorry, I lost that word. So they would be able to, to just, you know, go on to that other one. They might have to go three more miles down the road at the most, is what I'm saying. But also, many times they're shopping in town or something like that, so it would just be easier for them. The, so anyway, I am proposing, my proposal is, the first year we are required to have at least 85% of what we've always had open. So that would put us at, I think it was like eight and a half, but I still think 10 would be a good number to start with. Let's not totally take all of the places away from people. And then initially I figured that number on 15, but before that, after that, I called the Secretary of State and she said, no, what you're typically opening, what are, what are you typically opening? So people are used to 13 being open. And one of the reasons for that is because one of the polling places in Kennedy is literally a block over from the Kennedy City Hall where they also vote. So that one has been being closed. When we combine voting precincts, we've been doing that. And so if we would open 10, that would still be very convenient for most of our voters. I think for all of our voters, I couldn't see any that would travel more than three more miles than they did before. When we talk about that. And again, in these public meetings, I want to talk about placement of those. And they don't necessarily have to be the same places that we're opening now. They may be, somebody may have a better idea within the county of a better place to have an election or, you know, to hold poll. And so we want to talk about all that because I am concerned about some of our disability, the access and some of that with some of the, some of the places that we're using. It's been limited in the past and, you know, we've been able to get away with it like the passive standard, but I still want everybody to be able and comfortable when they go and vote, you know, and feel like they're taught. So that's, does that answer the question? And then the next line is, well, I think those two lines are going to end up being combined. Is that correct, Louan? I couldn't remember how I had it before, but currently I have two lines. VR postage, mass mailing, and then VR forms and supplies. Now, last year I only had one line and that expense, I only had $200 in it. That's because every two years we do a mass mailing. And so I have gotten the quotes to get our mass mailing done. We have about 7,900 registered voters right now. So what that means is the cards are changing. So they're going to be, I think they're going to be blue this next year. And so we are required to do a mass mailing of those new cards. And we have an organization, a company that, you know, we work with to get that done. And it comes out just as cheap as if we did it ourselves. But anyway, the mass mailing itself for the postage, he estimated like $1,900 something. And so I wanted to kind of go a little higher and so it may be just under that. But I put on my budget $2,200 for the mass mailing. That's just postage. And so, and then the VR forms and supplies, well, actually, yeah, that, the VR forms and supplies is the voter certificates that are being mailed out, so we have to pay for those. And then I also get an office supply of about $800 so that for the rest of those two years, every time we get a new voter or voter information changes, we're able to send them out a new card. And that line I put $750 because again, I've got estimates on what those supplies will cost me. And that's approximately the same as they were in 2013. It's really close to what they were. And then the next line is elections.
Gift conference expense.
Oh, you're, no, I did.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I saw computer expense and I was thinking, okay. So, and then the next line is, yes, the conference expense, and I did skip over that, you're correct. Last year I had $8,500 in there. If you'll look off to the side again, you get the, you get the explanation as to why that's so high. And we did have a discussion last year, but I, for the benefit of the two who are new. What that is, is in case something should happen to me currently, I am the only one who can, and I'm working quickly on getting the other two up to speed, or at least Mary, up to speed on programming, all of the election equipment, setting up the e-poll books, all the back stuff that has to be done so that the election can take place and people are getting the right ballots, people are getting the right information that they're able to, you know, they're connected to their voter precinct and the correct ballot that they need to have. And so there's a whole lot of that in the background that needs to be done and it's very technical. So I decreased that because I'm thinking, you know, the more training I get on my staff, the less we'll have to contract with HARP to have them come here and do that training. So for them to come for even, I think we, this last year had an incident where we almost had to use them because I was so sick and I was at home and it was, an election was coming and we needed to get our e-poll books done and things like that. And instead I just, I came in over the weekend because we got the quote from them and it was, it's like $1,250 a day or something like that. And for them to even do any of the training, I think the, or it's several hundred an hour and the minimum you can do is four hours, but they estimate it'll take them a whole day. So it might have even been like over $2,000 when we did that. So if, if we should have to do that. Now, I told you in there what conferences I intend to go to, which are simply the SOS Election Law Seminar. There are two of those per year. One of them is for the county, the other is for the political subdivisions. And then also the Association of Elections Administrators. We have an annual conference for our organization and that one is held throughout Texas. So that one sometimes varies. The SOS Election Law Seminar, they do them in Austin every year and so it's pretty easy to figure out what your budget's going to be for those. And then, like I said, that last line tells you that is, the only reason that line is so high is because we have election event support, staff refresher training and poll worker training for the voter system, so that would be specific to HARP coming in and doing that. Now, just, just so that I'm not remiss, I also have a line on the very, very bottom, which is called Special Election Contracted Funds. Now, those funds can be used, they are, they cannot be considered in the budget and they cannot be used for anything that is statutorily required within our office to work on. So I put approximately, we can use up to $3,500 on there. And so I can do like some of the, what, the one training that I would really like to see through to certification is the SERO training because it is the only certified election, what is it, election, I forgot now. I always, I have it in my notes somewhere, but anyway. That's our only certified election registered administrator is what that is for. And that's the only certification training that's available. And often, that Secretary of State keeps, you know, hinting at the fact that they'd like to make that mandatory. They haven't yet. But I am a person who, I believe, the more information, the more networking I can do, the more I can add and contribute to the county as a whole. And so that's always been my mantra and I always seek out extra education opportunities. And I believe that education opportunities behoove the county to have people when it's at a minimal cost. So if you have any other questions, that's the end of what I have to say. Okay? And then the next line item is elections expense. Last year we had $2,603 in there and actually I'm over on that. I'm not sure why I'm over on that. I think because some of the funds that have been put back in there that we've used. But the, I moved that back up to $40,000 and that's because obviously next year is a county elections year. So we will be having to take care of the primary elections, although the parties themselves actually pay for those elections, but we pay for them first and the parties pay us. And the county as a whole is required to, will require to pay for all of the early voting that's related to those, so all the cost-related early voting with the primaries, any runoffs, and then the final election, that's all county expense. And then plus, we always have the election in November, which is for the usually constitutional amendments and things like that. Those are the ones we have. And of course, this year, we had a number of, not a number, I think I had three or four new elections that we wouldn't have normally had towards the end of the year and the beginning of the year due to house seats that were, that we needed to get seated, that covered our county. And so we had extra elections and those come at county expense. There's no reimbursement from the state for those.
You're saying that on the primaries, that the parties pay for the election, but early voting is paid for by the county?
Yes, sir.
For any contract elections that you've held this year, school board, cities, et cetera, have we received reimbursement?
No. We've got a couple of them on my desk now that came in last week. Yes, ma'am. There were five total, so I think there's two or three that have sent me checks.
You got them last week and you still have them?
Yes, sir.
Why in the maternity?
I, because I was waiting to get the stamp and I had not yet gotten deposit tickets because I was told that we needed to go through during all that. And yes, that's my fault. It just hasn't been done. And then the next line would be my bond, of course, which stays the same every year, $50. And the next line is election equipment maintenance. Now, that one was at $10,000 last year. I increased it, but only slightly because I would like to look at doing an extended warranty on the equipment. To do an extended warranty, it'll cost us $3,960 a year for that extended warranty. All the other, the other items that are listed up there to tell you what, you know, what I'm using in that line are license and support, which of course is a required fee when you have any type of a system and you're, you know, you're using their software. So those are annual fees for those. And then I'm adding that $3,960 for extended warranty because I checked into what it would cost for each machine to get fixed is approximately $750 to $1,000, depending on the type of machine. And plus you have to pay for shipment there and shipment back from HARP, plus you have to wait for your machines. And so in the best interest of the county, in my opinion, again, is to go ahead and purchase that extended warranty for $3,960. That covers every piece of equipment we have. And if we have any issues with it, they'll come to us and get them fixed. And they'll come in actually every year at one time and do their annual maintenance to the machines so that they stay in good shape and that type of thing. So all that's included in there.
Will that be a yearly cost?
Yes, sir.
The $3,960 is a yearly cost?
Yes, sir.
And what I understand is the warranty would cover all parts and labor?
That is correct, sir. My next line is dues and memberships, which is staying the same, that's $350. There are two organizations that I'm a member of, which is the Texas Association of Elections Administrator as well as the Election Center. The next line item is furniture. And I really don't have an anticipation of any furniture at all, but I did leave $200 in there. I had $500 in there the last year, but I did leave $200 in there just in case if we, you know, do move somewhere else and there's something that's needed. But really, you know, I don't anticipate anything in there. And then also that bottom line, again, for office renovations. If we are able to relocate so that we have better voter access, then I would, you know, wanted to leave some money in there and in case that does happen in next year's budget.
Your computers, you had one time talked about purchasing a laptop or something?
We talked about it, but if we go to the countywide voting precincts, it won't be as important for us to do that because the only, the only reason that we were thinking about doing that was if we were, you know, if someone comes into a voting precinct and Mary and I are always out during, on Election Day. Usually she's covering some of the polling places and I'm covering others. And so we would want to have access to the teen system, which is the system that, you know, tells us who's registered to vote where and that type of thing. But with these countywide voting precincts, everyone will be able to see, or, I'm sorry. It doesn't really matter where they're, where they have to go to vote. They can go to any place they want to go to, so they can go to the closest place they want to. And that was a thought we had. We also thought about it for mapping, but, you know, I just, I hesitate to put anything in my budget for mapping because I feel like, again, that that's a countywide issue and that we need to get that all figured out countywide. I shouldn't have, you know, Mary going out and putting points on a map. I mean, we should be able to get all that information, so. And I do continue to work on that solution, just so you know. I did contact San Antonio River Authority again the other day just to see what kind of maps do they have? How useful would they be to us? Would we be able to, because I know that when I worked with the San Antonio River Authority, we did this as a service to our communities. And I have, I seeked out the layers from the gentleman who did the last redistricting. And so he sent those to me and they're, they can be overlaid. And I believe that the River Authority, they can help us to get those overlaid and then they can print us out some really good maps that we would be able to use. Not sure, but that was, that's why I, I kind of, you know, we discussed that computer, but I did not put it in there, no sir.
On your, excuse me, on your Special Election Contract Fund at the bottom?
Yes, sir.
That's kind of a contingency fund? I mean, it appears from what I'm reading as possible mailings, advertisements not required, not covered by, et cetera, et cetera. Is that the situation with that item?
I wouldn't call it that, but I understand that it could be termed that, but not exactly because there are certain things, and that fund is very limited in what you really can use it for. So if we decide to do mailings and things like that, we're able to use that fund. So I say, let's use that fund. There's money there, let's use it, let's not take it out of the general fund. So what I do is I look at all the things it can be used for and want to use it so it's not just sitting here and it's not coming out of our general fund. I'm sorry.
What funds is?
That is from our contract elections, any.
Just all the contracts?
Yes, all our contracted elections, yes, sir. And those funds are under the. And those funds are under the control of the Elections Administrator in that, you know, I would have to approve things that are taken out of those funds and we're just not allowed to put that fund in our, put, yeah, to consider it in the budget when we consider our budget. But I kind of do because I always think, well, could I maybe use this down here instead of putting it up in my general budget?
So the money you have sitting on your desk would go into this fund?
Uh, not the entire amount, no, sir. Only the amount that we did not expend already for the election. So I have a 10% administrative fee that we add to each election, but, but we, and then also there is the, we rent machines. So in my opinion, the rental of the machines should go back to the cost of the, the initial cost of the machines because, you know, I mean, after a while, then those machines are paid off and we're basically renting them out and getting a profit. But I'm not sure how all that goes, but the actual, the 10% that we caused, charge for administrative fee goes into this fund. It all goes into one fund and then it gets split out, but it's reimbursing costs and then the amount over that reimbursement is actually what goes into that fund.
And even though it's not a expenditure at the control of Commissioner's Court, it still has to be itemized in the budget to facilitate spending.
Oversight on that fund is through the auditor's office?
Of course, like everything else. Yes, sir.
Is your clerk, deputy clerk, they, they had the same amount of work that they had last year? You said they had a lot of extra work getting addresses and things started out, precincts and that, that's still the same?
We're still working on that, yes, sir. But I do anticipate the possibility of cutting down some hours on both of them. The way that we have them set up are, you know, part-time and I don't even, it, well, if you look at my budget, you'll see that I, even though y'all said I could have them for 20 hours a week, I think was my second position, I usually only schedule her for 17 hours a week and I may even schedule her for 15 hours a week some weeks, you know, just, I keep really good control over when they're here, they've got something to do and that, yes, sir.
Karen, since there's two new members on the court, explain to them your logic into having two part-timers instead of one full-timer?
The reason I prefer to have two, two part-timers versus one full-timer is because the, in the elections and the way that it works, it's very nice to have that little bit of flexibility. And obviously instead of a full-timer, we wouldn't, we don't, we don't have to pay them any kind of, of benefits, but that wasn't necessarily in my decision. What I considered was the fact that now when elections do come up, I have two people that are trained and ready to go and they can, they can fill in and they can work 40 or more hours that week and they're ready to go and I don't have to spend the extra time retraining those two people. And that, you know, to me, that's a great value.
Are your people happy with that?
They're very happy with that.
Did you say the tax, 7,900 when you were?
Yes, approximately. It goes up and down. Of course.
Karen, in your requested conference expense of 5,500, how much of that is conferences only for you or easier? How much of that includes your?
I'd say mine is approximately 3,000 out of that. And then, you know, initially I had that separated last year, but when we, we got to talk in the one, he had told me just to put it all in that one line. So I'm happy to separate that out.
It would all go in one line, but for budgeting workshops, it'd be nice if I sat up there and was making the decisions to know who was going to what.
To what, yeah. And like I said, I listed the ones that I plan to go to. And if we, if we're, if we're able, I do like to go to some of the CERA training, but again, I use that down there in that special election contract fund. But I do come before you before we spend that, those funds, or at least, you know, I did last year. This year I think I'm going to go to one, but it's in state. Last year was not.
Didn't we just register for that?
Yes.
So I have it.
One of the conferences, yes, but it's in state. Last year was not.
Right, but you said you normally, you would bring it before court before you did it, but I thought we had just registered, that's why I asked.
Yeah, you're right. And I knew that as soon as I said it, I said, but that was because it was in state. That was the reason I made the decision this year.
What other problems have you had? You know, I know there's been a big issue with addressing and mapping and stuff, getting precinct stuff, so what other issues have you had?
Cleaning up the team system is a big, big, you know, it's a big responsibility as far as just getting it cleaned up to where, and that's hard for me to explain here, but basically there are every, every road within our county is put in there and then every address within our county and then we have to attach that to the, to make sure that it's in the correct precinct, not only voting precinct, but school precinct, city precinct, and then of course the Commissioner and JP, which of course are the same. And then we're lucky in that our statewide offices cover the entire county, so we don't have to do that, but many counties they even have to divide that up and know what those are. So anytime we get a new address, if it's not already in the system, then we have to do investigation to figure out exactly where it is. Is it a 911 address? If it is a 911 address and we're told that it is, then we're able to add that to team. And if it's not a 911 address, then we have to go back to the, to the voter and send them out a card that says, are you, where, where do you really live? You know, what address is registered with, with 911? Because the only way we can, we can put them into the correct precincts is by knowing where the, does that make sense? I know it's. And then, okay, so we have the streets and then of course the cities. There are many roads that are in several cities and there are some people, I still haven't figured all of it out, but sometimes someone will say they live in Hobson where as their next door neighbor lives in, they use a rungie address or something like that. We found some really strange ones where they're living right next door to each other, but one is this and one is that. So we have to figure out where are you really at and we actually have to change their residential address versus their mailing address because the residential address is what matters is to where and how they get to vote.
Are the schools and the cities addressing their issues?
They are. They're working with us, but you know, that has been a long, hard process because it wasn't done in the past. We, we have found many, many errors and, you know, I have been lucky in that I have Mary in my office and I always think, I know someday she's going to leave because she's a valuable person, but anyway, she knows the county really, really well and so there'll be times she can just look at something and say, that's not in the right one, and so she'll get with the school or whatever. But this, but we, but the schools and the cities understand that it's their responsibility and if they haven't done it, you know, they take the hit for it and not us, although I'm sure we get some bad press out of it. But the, they need to, if they want us to, to do it, which of course is the way that it's supposed to be done statewide, you know, the county elections office or it is, or, or voter registrar in the past is responsible for putting people into the correct precincts, but, but not responsible if they don't have the information. So we have to know from them because we have so many entities that are not at large. All of our schools and cities are not at large, so they all have their own districts. And so someone might live in District One of the City of Kennedy, but District Five of the School District of Kennedy or something like that. And all of that has to be in the system correctly so that when it's spit out and those people get their ballots, they're getting correct ballots. And yes, they're taking, we've been working very closely with them, Shelby, to get that done.
And this is from last week too, but do you have virus software on your computer?
I do not. I only have what he, Jeff has put on my computer as a free, free virus protection. And I would like to do it, but I just have never, you know, I didn't put that in my budget. Perhaps that's what I should put in my budget. No one ever let me know that that's something that I can just do myself. So I've been, I've been trying to really watch that. I thought, in other organizations I've been with, that's a organization-wide thing because it's a lot cheaper to, to purchase it as an organization and then just continue to purchase different licenses for the, for the number of computers and anytime you get a new computer. And so I was told that wasn't really available in the county.
Just a thought, but on your election expense, next year is a major general election.
Yes, sir.
The primaries will be in this fiscal year, but the general election will fall into the next fiscal year.
That's incorrect, I'm sorry. The, oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you said the primaries would be in this fiscal year.
Well, not, not the ones-
I understand, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The ones that we're discussing now, I'm sorry, not verification.
Yes, I understand.
That the, what is it, 15, 16 budget?
Yes.
Would not include the general election. That would be in 16 and 17. What I'm interested in is, what I'm hearing you say is the election expense goes up and down depending, which makes sense on the amount of activity. We're up for a part of the year that most of the expenses will be reimbursable, but we'll have to look at this thing again because the major general election is in November, which will be in the next fiscal cycle. Now, I'm not fussing at you about the 40,000. I don't know if I ought not, but what I'm saying is, is the one that will be costly to the county is the general election and that's not in the budget cycle we're talking about.
That's correct, but there is one in this budget cycle because we're going to have a November election. And so really in my budget every year is the November election. It's actually those, you're right, I didn't state that. Those primaries and all the runoffs that run up to that general election is what fluctuates my budget.
I mean, I can understand the ebb and flow of the expenses. We see the flow next year. We hope to see the end.
Right, that's exactly right.
So Karen, since part of our election expense for fiscal year 16-
Yes.
-will be reimbursed by the parties, we should only budget the amount that is the county's expense?
That's my, that's my opinion as well, Juan, but you and I had this conversation and you specifically told me that not to budget that way, that, that I, I budget for what expenses I'm going to have and I don't consider at all what's coming back in. And so that is how I've set up this budget the last two years.
We need to show, if you're going to show it like this, which is what's been discussed in the past, then you need to provide the amount of estimated reimbursement so we can show it as revenue.
Okay, all right. I mean, I would have been doing that all along because that's the way I budgeted at the River Authority and wanted to budget that way last year, but I was specifically told not to. So maybe it was a miscommunication. I apologize for that if it was, but that, that's how I understand budgeting. I've been getting more confused in setting my budget without considering what comes back.
Is there any issue with amending, if you want to term it, what we have now to look at, look at it again?
Are you talking about amending her, her request?
Yes.
She can submit a amended request should she desire?
Well, I mean-
Or she can just provide the information as far as reimbursing revenue so that we can show it either net or we show the revenue via it?
Yeah, because part of the problem is, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you meant. When, when I made the deposits, they don't go back into that same account that I took them out of. They go into some other account. You told me the general fund or something like that.
If they're reimbursing expenses we've paid out, they go against the expense line on them?
They haven't been.
Yeah, yes, they are.
They're going in, you told me they were going into some general-
It's in the general fund, but it's against the line on-
But I never see the reimbursements in my budget. When y'all send me stuff, all I see is, okay, how, this is how much you spent. Like right now, it's in the negative of like 26,000.
But we haven't received, we just recently received reimbursements from the city and some school district for last year's elections.
Right, yeah, no, I understand.
Very delinquent on the reimbursements. I don't know if that's from the delinquency of requesting reimbursement or if that's delinquency on the schools and cities getting them to it.
Yeah, because they have to go through the same ruckus we have to go through.
Should we have a policy?
We actually have a 19,000 bill for running city and school elections.
We do, we do have a policy on that?
Actually, what I was going to say was I do put on the bottom of my invoices that they must be paid within 30 days.
And they just ignore it?
Some, that's correct. We don't have an elections department.
Do we retaliate?
No, no, we've never done an election for someone who hasn't already paid us, if that's what you're asking.
No.
Is that not what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking if they're delinquent a year and then they want us to do it again, do we not have a sit-down visit with them and?
I do, actually, yes, but-
So you're not going to tolerate that?
But I'm also required to, I'm required, it's a statutory requirement, that I, I contacted them. So it's really, it is, it's like a catch-
What recourse do you have? When we just paid a 19,000 bill for school and, and city elections, if they don't reimburse them, like we don't have any, we don't have any recourse?
Well, if it was out of my department and I knew I had that outstanding bill, I would be constantly obligated to remind them.
Which is what I do.
And I mean, and it wouldn't just be verbal reminders, I would be doing it in writing. So should there ever come a need for legal action, I would have documentation that I-
Yeah, and that is what I do. I keep it.
Are you standing before the Commission of Court? If you have a delinquent city, for example, Kennedy, Paul City, whoever?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you bring it to the Commission's Court and tell them?
I, I brought it to their attention in the past.
Is there anybody delinquent now?
Today, no.
Well, what led into this is I think before the budget is considered in its final form, that these additional figures that y'all are discussing would be very beneficial-
I agree.
-to take a look at it. It will make your budget look a lot more palatable, I believe.
Exactly, exactly. I completely agree and thank you.
So the school district and city elections that were just in May, we've received reimbursement on?
On at least three of them.
Oh, no. And those are what?
We only had five.
Those are what have not been received in yet that you have on your desk?
That is correct, the ones I have on my desk. And to be honest with you, I lost my key to my mailbox. So I know that there's been a week, they may have been in there an extra week and I'm working on that. I don't, I didn't personally lose it, but I take the responsibility because I'm the head of the department, but we've been looking for it and so we got our mail like one whole week late because I couldn't catch the post office guy either. So I've got to actually get that lot changed.
How do you know who personally lost it?
I don't, that's the problem.
How do you know who you did?
I don't, that's the problem. So I, I take responsibility for it, whether I did or did not.
How long has it been missing?
Two weeks.
Anybody go to the post office, the postmaster, hand you the mail?
We did, yes, sir.
Didn't get it?
And he's doing that now?
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, I admit it, you know, I can tell you, there's a lot of other departments that have lots of issues. They don't come up here and admit it, but I admit, when I make a mistake, there's a problem in my department, you're going to hear about it. So look at it however you want. I do have more information that I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, if I may.
Talk about what's important and let the rest of it go.
This is very important.
Well, you should have started with it. Go ahead.
I wanted to, to remind you, of course, I saw, I, when you do work on setting the salaries, I did send each of you a memo and I hope that you got that and considered the facts that were in there. The only thing that, that, there were only a couple anomalies really in that last salary survey and I know this has been kicked around and I know people are tired of this subject, but I feel it is important for my department that we remind the court of these actions so that when you do consider salaries, you, you consider our department. It, you know, it's not often that a new department is, is established in Plano County, but I do know that it seems that people, instead of looking at the fact that we were a new department and never brought to the actual salary that it should have been brought into, which when I took the position and everything, this is my bad, I guess, because I, I trusted. When I talked with the Commission, the set of five people that I spoke with when I took my position, I was told that this was temporary, that they were doing a salary survey and my position would be brought to the, the place within the salary structure that it belonged, that, that everybody understood that. Well, then that salary survey happened and those five people, of course, didn't really get a big say in the salary survey. That was the one that we did with Mr. Whirling. However, Mr. Whirling does seem to understand the county's structure much more than this past organization does. But anyway, so I wanted to remind you of that. You know, that was a new department. It's not necessarily, I shouldn't be considered as, oh, well, I don't have county experience. I came into a new department. So when you formed, let's say, or when you decided to hire a road and bridge administrator, you decided you wanted a quality person- hire a road and bridge administrator, you decided you wanted a quality person within that position, and so, you set the salary based on what that position within a county structure should be able to make so that you get a quality individual. Um, and also, um, the other one I can remember is the EMS administrator, that was a whole new department being formed. When you talked about salaries, you didn't talk about, well, how much county experience they have and things like that, you talked about where do they belong within the county structure. So, my biggest issue, um, is the fact, of course, that an elections administrator is a very diverse position. There are only a hundred and five counties in Texas now, which has grown exponentially since I started, out of the two hundred and fifty-four total that we have in Texas. But, um, I did quite a bit of, um, of research on this issue, and if you look at the salary structures, you will find, and I do have copies of a few counties if, if you want them, I know that sometimes you're not interested in what I have, but, um, I did do, um, research on a number of counties, and, and not one of those counties was, um, the elections administrator position not put into the proper structure where it belongs, which is kind of like directly below the elected officials. So, for example, we have Refugio County who actually has less people than we have, and I'm not gonna go over all of them, but I have several examples. Their county clerk and their district clerk make fifty-three, six, twenty-seven, their county tax assessor does as well, which makes perfect sense. Their auditor assistant makes, um, fifty-seven, two, fifty-six, broken out to two assistants because they didn't break it out specific to each position, so that would be about twenty-eight, six if you divided that by two, perhaps, but their elections administrator makes forty-one, seven. So, in other words, election administrator is above another appointed official's assistant. Um, in Gaines County, their county clerk and district clerk make sixty-one thousand, four, thirty-four, they have the same number of registered voters we have. Their county tax assessor-collector makes sixty-one thousand, four, thirty-four. Their auditor's assistant, this one was put on there, was forty-one, eight, sixty-eight, twenty-seven, and their EA was fifty-one, five. So typically, an EA position should be in the, and I, and I'm looking, not only honestly, I mean, I know everybody's going, oh, she wants a raise, she wants a raise, yes, I do, because I deserve one, because I've done the job and I've proven myself and I have the experience and I have the knowledge that is, sorry, required to do this position, and I deserve to be paid what the position deserves, and it needs to be put in the proper county structure. And I'm not asking for a specific amount, I'm not even saying that our auditor's assistant doesn't deserve what she gets because she's, she does a lot of work and she, she has a lot of responsibilities as well, however, she does not run a department and she does not, uh, I don't believe runs on salaries, I'm not sure about that, is she salaried?
She's salaried, but she also earns comp time.
So, she's not salaried?
Well, it's-
No, I'm sorry, salary means you do not get compensated for overtime, that's what salary means.
Karen, every position in Cortez County is budgeted by salary, except for part timers, they are all considered salary.
Okay, okay.
In my opinion, you need to back off and quit addressing the auditor's assistant because those salaries are set by the district judges, not by commissioners' court.
Okay, I appreciate your opinion. So, all I'm asking is not necessarily that I'm, that I'm making more than, uh, anyone else who's an appointed or a head of a department or anything like that. I do cover the entire county in my position that I do. The only reason I brought up the auditor's assistant is because to me it was an anomaly and that's the only reason I point out that position. Again, it is not personal, she probably earns what she makes, but I also earn more than that because of what I do in my position, and I do not get comp time. I do not, if I work more than forty hours, which I do, in most weeks, I do not get comp time. So, I just wanna state it, you can question if you like, if not, I'll leave. That's all, I just wanted to be right.
Well, you've stated everything two or three times, so let's get on down the road. Let me ask a question, but, um, I just looked at these this morning. Is this, did you prepare the election administration department sheet that's in-
Yes, that, that's the one I prepared, yes, sir.
I, I've added up those figures and I've come out with a figure of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars total-
Okay.
As opposed to your figure of sixty-seven, five, eighty.
Okay.
I, I don't understand what the difference is.
I don't either, sir, to be honest with you, I-
Well, it's not correct.
Right, and what I did was, I, I, I did not double check my math, I depended on the Excel spreadsheet.
You were right.
I, I depended on the Excel spreadsheet.
Well, man, it's, it's crazy.
Well-
That, you know, I did the, the sum on the Excel spreadsheet.
I don't, I don't think you could do figures that way, I'm sorry.
You can't.
I think you have to check them and you have to recheck them and, uh-
I'll recheck them.
I wish when you prepared figures for the court, that you would check them and recheck them and-
Yes, sir.
Give us corrections.
Okay.
And not mistaken ones.
What's missing, you missed the twenty-two hundred dollars in postage.
And I think because I added that at the last minute, that's what happened.
Well-
And I know, it's just an excuse, it's not, it's not a reason.
Can you let somebody finish a thought, you interrupt them every time.
I'm sorry, but I didn't think I'd interrupted anyone.
Can I have a place up?
Any other questions or comments from the court?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda?
Yes, sir.
We're down to your-
Which page, seventeen?
Which seventeen are you talking about?
The new seventeen, because I put the old seventeen in your book, I guess Susanna probably did that.
Are you sure that third page, it doesn't have a number on it, it's not also seventeen?
It is a continuation of seventeen.
A continuation of seventeen.
So, it's seventeen-eight, perhaps. I'm sorry that I'm so dumb, but then the next page is thirty-seven, so I, you know.
That, that, Joshua, I was gonna show you, because I did notice when I was standing up here, whoever put it together for you, they put it together for you in order of the, of the, how they're being done. So, in other words, what she did for you, other than she also included last year, so what you just turned was the second, then you'll turn this one and you'll have your special, special projects, and then road and bridge, and then which I guess it was Susanna that did that, but I, I just happened to notice that, I'll say.
And you don't know that it was Susanna, so don't say that.
I don't, I said I-
Yes, it was somebody.
I said it was Susanna.
All right, go, go tell somebody else that stuff.
Okay, no problem.
Must be. Go ahead, please.
I'll be short and sweet of them.
Wrong one.
Payless, payless?
Get that right.
Okay. Um, my first item on my list was office supplies, decreased it by, by three hundred dollars, we're pretty much on line, in line with what we budgeted for fifteen. On the property tax rate notices, that's pretty much per contract. The contract with Richard Navid did go up by, what do we have? Last year was thirty-one, nine, fifty, this year the budget is thirty-six, nine, fifty. Uh, a large part of that is they, uh, is on the printing of the statements and the tax rolls and such, they greatly underestimated the volume, so that's the biggest part of that increase. The software licensing, I believe, went up a thousand dollars also. The postage, again, was greatly underestimated by, by Richard and Abbott, uh, we budgeted three thousand, three, twenty-three, came in at seventy-five hundred and sixteen dollars, because that was just the volume, just the volume of, of stuff going out. Uh, and he, he suggested that I put a two-point-five percent increase on the postage, so I married that up to seventy-eight hundred dollars for the postage on, on everything for this year, for next year. On the telephone, I, I had, last year, I noticed, in my budget was just sixteen hundred dollars, and I did propose last year thirty-five hundred dollars. I didn't know it got changed to sixteen hundred dollars, which I guess is an oversight on my part, I should've paid closer attention. We're running way over budget this year, a lot of that, that's with, with the DMG, Department of Vehicles, we're having to do a lot of webinars, and because, I'm hoping maybe if we get the faster internet, because we really can't, we have to call in also because of the internet's slow and it, you can't really understand them, so that's a large part of, of why we're going over budget on phone, so hopefully, if we get the faster internet, maybe we won't need that much, I don't know if that works that way, but that's, that's the increase.
So Brenda, when you'll call in on those, it's not a toll-free number y'all are calling on?
No, it's not.
So you're long distance.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. The mileage, that's my mileage to the bank and so forth, Armani, Tammy, whoever, usually just the two of us goes to the bank, I lowered that by five hundred dollars. Conference expense, I just kept it the same.
Let me ask you a question right quick, so y'all carry all of your money yourselves from your office to all city?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we have our own accounts, yes, sir.
Okay, have you ever thought of trying to get the sheriff's office to carry the funds for you?
We can certainly do that, I mean, that's just how it's been done in the past, but I'm just, I'm so, you know, I love to do, whatever you do, but, yeah, whatever you do.
If it would save money, so, would it be something-
Well, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
You wanna check into it or you-
I sure can.
You don't want me checking into it?
I'll talk, I'll talk to later, you can, whatever.
No.
You just have to-
You check into it.
I'll talk to later, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Brenda, Brenda, on your conference expense, and I'm breaking in on you, I apologize, but, uh, I noticed you're way under, you still have some-
Well, I just went, I just was in Austin last week, but hopefully that's my last, that was my last training, I finished my last court course. So, but there are two conferences a year, uh, the BG Young and the TACA conference, I chose not to go to the TACA conference this year because it was in Lubbock, and I, I do learn a lot if it's a little closer, I just didn't go to Lubbock, but I will go to the BG Young one in San Marcos.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, the computer expense, uh, that's pretty much per contract, and I, I told y'all what it, um, there were some expenses in the licensing and, um-
Brenda, this is Richard Navid's, his contract is a pre- or district grant?
Well, that, that's our software, but the appraisal district, oh, does do Richard Navid also. We're on the same software, but they pay their own bill, this is just for the tax office, okay?
And they operate off the same server?
Right.
That's what it is.
Yeah, same server.
That, this is, uh, all either licensing, well, there's a little bit of hardware in there, I was gonna say, this is mainly all software-
Software.
Support.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, on the next page, on the new computers, um, we are in need of two printers, there's a new one, we need a new one up at the tax counter, those things are old and they're slow, like we, and a printer that goes between Sandy and Lydia's desk, and those are very high-volume printers, thus, thus the price, um, of those things. Uh, they're like sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars a piece for those big high-volume printers, and I put an extra thousand in there just for miscellaneous, because you never, you never know what's gonna happen with the computers. The bond is the same, thousand dollars. Association dues is the same, I'm a member of a, a TAC, the Tax Assessor Collectors Association, and the TAAO, the Tax Association of Assessing Officers, so that's the same. And furnishings, uh, I have, I've only spent like five hundred and twenty dollars this year, I think, so I just left a thousand in there for miscellaneous, nothing, nothing big.
What happened to your blinds, did they ever fix them?
Well, we're waiting. Uh, they're going to have to come and repair that plaster that's up there because it's just, it just goes to powder. So, they're gonna have to come in there and put some type of board, a ledger, a ledger board, is that the right word, to bolt the, the blinds to. So, we're waiting on, on them to come do that.
It's not gonna be done in this year?
Should be, yes, yes.
Looking at this year as compared to last year, so there's about a fifteen thousand dollar increase, but I believe that's primarily due to the computer expense, it was, there was almost nothing included last year-
Right.
-because it was supposed to go to the IT department, which hasn't developed yet, and I guess that's where most of your increase is.
Yes, I believe so, and it, of course, the, well, and the, the contract with Richard Navid went up some too. And I would just like to make mention, um, oh, there was a change on my staffing, my seasonal employee, that worked out great for us, I have her, I believe from November first through February fifteenth, I would like to extend that two weeks. Uh, she's just there during the busy tax time, all, all they do is, is tax, they don't mess with auto or anything, but it's a great help handling the mail and the phone call volumes, and I would like to, if I could increase it by two, if that'd be great, or if I could, I'll leave it the same, whatever we need to do. And as far as, I don't need any additional help, um, but I would like to address, address the salary issue, and I put a little note on there that, that my staff, my, my deputy clerks are paid only twelve ninety-six an hour, while all the other clerk, deputies in this county start off at thirteen fifty-nine, and I, I would hope that that could be equalized.
Why did they get that?
I don't know, that's just the way the salary survey came out, Judge, they're the lowest-paid clerks. So, if we could at least bring my girls up to, to what the other midpoint was of the other deputies, because they are bonded, and take an O, and then, you know, perhaps, put the three percent on top of that, I think that would be great, or even more than we did. And again, you know, I think everyone's concerned about the longevity, keeping our good employees.
Are you fully staffed, Brenda?
Yes, sir. Any questions? Sir, sweetie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's a-
Thirty-seven, yes.
Thirty-seven.
The second and third, because currently this year, three departments were combined into one.
Go ahead, Brenda.
For office supplies, we're asking five thousand dollars to send this last year. For maintenance, for RGIS, which is something that wasn't put in last year, what we paid four hundred dollars for computers, so that's eight hundred dollars we need, that's ordered to new mountain. The internet and the telephone is three thousand, it's the same as last year. Training and conference is five thousand, um, that's the same as last year. Vehicle insurance, we went down, we were the original proposal asking for a thousand, but we only need five hundred because we're handing over the other truck to emergency management. Vehicle repairs, we did increase it by a thousand from last year because we're gonna keep the older truck and it needs belts, hoses, and AC, air conditioners will stop blowing, or it's blowing, but it's blowing hot air, and we're gonna, again, turn that truck over. Mollage and fuel, I mean, we're taking over the nine-one address and the permitting, and we do the OSSF. We're, um, bringing it down from what we originally thought from seventy-nine hundred to five thousand, because we think we're plenty enough money there, maybe even less. And then miscellaneous, we're gonna move twenty-five hundred to the IT, so that'll bring it down to a thousand dollars for the miscellaneous. Cell phone, air cards, now only one, so it's a thousand. The floodplain assessment is ten thousand, but that's reimbursed back from the people when they pay them, and that's the total. The highlighted areas, and y'all are the ones that we've changed from what we originally proposed.
Why is the training conferences at five thousand, today COG usually is three a year?
The ACOG is, but I, as you know, I've only trained by the X person that was two before me, and if you go to the actual, the trottoir of training itself, it's supposed to be five of one. I've been here, you know, as long as I got trained by Brenda because ACOG had no one, and what we were told, each meeting is like three- do the OSSF. We're bringing it down from what we originally thought from 7,900 to 5,000, because we think we're plenty enough money there, maybe even less. And then miscellaneous, we're going to move 2,500 to the IT, so that'll bring us down to $1,000 for the miscellaneous. Cell phone, air cards, now only one, so it's a thousand. The floodplain assessment is $10,000, but that's reimbursed back from the people when they pay them, and that's the total. The highlighted areas, and y'all are the ones that we've changed from what we originally proposed.
Why is the training conferences at 5,000? Because ACOG usually is three a year.
The ACOG is, but I, as you know, I've only trained by the ex person that was two before me, and if you go to the actual, the Toronto of training itself, it's supposed to be five a month. I've been here, you know, as long as I got trained by Brenda, because ACOG had no one. And what we were told, each meeting is like 3,000. I have not attended, I have no idea. We want to go to.
You were told what?
That the meeting to run, like Brenda told us, to go to a meeting with the Toronto is like 3,000, to actually learn everything that, she only could train me so much, because we did it during my lunch hours, and we did it outdoor. So that's, I don't know, I've never gone.
Who's she?
Brenda. The one that had us two jobs ago, the one that knew.
And what about FEMA training?
That's me. I go to FEMA training. And that's only $100 for me to go to the FEMA training and my.
So we don't, we use it, we're just asking.
I was asking because I just wondered.
It was, excuse me, it was kind of a shot in the dark. We did, I think.
Right.
And, but does your main agreement with ours, is that not the one license y'all have? Is it cover each, is one for each computer?
It's one for each computer. Yes, it's one for each.
And which truck are you proposing to keep?
The gray one. He wants to keep the old gray one, and that old gray one needs, when we take it in, before the new one came in, it said it needed new belts, hoses. They were guessing it was a 2007, we didn't look at it this morning, I didn't either. And the AC stopped blowing since we brought it back from Alex and Ford. Thank you. So, I mean, we don't mind keeping all the truck, it doesn't bother us. Gets us to the trouble we need to go.
This is an addendum, and it has nothing to do with them, but everybody wants a new vehicle at 100,000 miles. I don't drive anything that's got less than 200,000, and they work fairly well.
Your cell phones and air card, that is both, not just air card, that's the office cellphone and the cost of the air card?
Yes, and we reduced it because it was two, we put it down to 1,000, because I don't even know what it really runs, but I mean, that's, it was 2,000 last year, so we moved it down to 1,000. And by listening to the sheriff the other day, I know I have to use my cellphone for work as well, not just my personal. I've been using my personal because I don't, you know, I never.
They didn't add this, and I'm not trying to toot their horn too loud, but in the process of the slight reorganization, these two ladies taking over the permitting enforcement, I guess is the proper way of saying it, relieved a $20 an hour plus benefits employee of Roden Bridge to go back to building roads instead of driving around and looking for hoses. So, you know, they, they're, in addition to their relatively modest budget, we also managed to save the county some money by consolidating a position.
Because we're not getting, we haven't got the, we're just, it was 40,700, that's what it was, 3,713, we just didn't.
While we're talking about training.
Yes, sir.
And we indicated that Vandera County was very helpful to you.
I have traveled to Vandera, they don't charge me, they should pay for gas.
Well, would you need to take trips like that to Vandera somewhere, is that included in here for your mom?
I mean, I don't think we'll hit to 5,000, but I'd really be safe, I'm sorry, especially with doing the permitting, the extra chasing down the oil companies.
But I know we need to put our training necessary, ACOG.
Right. Well, ACOG's up in way better since January that the new people took over. And the guys, they, you know, it's, they're getting used to everything too, like the new map they brought in, the overlay is off, and I waited for two months, and also when you do the measurement to do the 911 addressing, I have to use the old program and the new program to get it correct, because the new program puts me off 100 feet, so that message or addresses up. So I use both programs, and ACOG just responded on Friday for me to contact this guy, the Toronto's that wrote the program, and hopefully they can fix it. So I only use one program, not both, to address something.
Are you getting the book?
Yes, yes. I mean, Vandera County has been wonderful about helping me, and they're just awesome about helping anybody.
David has stated that the work is slowing down, is your work slowed down?
Well, we're dealing with permitting and stuff, I mean.
I mean, 911, not one about permitting, 911, it's just slowed down?
Well, yeah, as everybody in the county, yes, they all are slowing down.
So how many addresses are you issuing a week or a month?
Depending who comes in. I've been here, likely, I've had a lot of people come in and change us, and we still document changes.
Can you give a number, five, 10, 20, 100?
Do you have any other? I don't know, I just do it as they come in, I don't count.
And you're doing just strictly floodplain?
I'm doing floodplain, I'm doing septic, I'm doing determination development programs. And like I said, we also help with the permitting or the water lines, the entrances.
Determination, y'all talking about doing stuff to the cities?
No, sir. That is just county.
Okay.
Even last month, that was really slow. The amount of money we brought in just from permitting doesn't even take, you could take his hour, my hour, our my hour and hers hour, and divide it by the 12 months, and the slow month was last month, and we didn't even take it, and we took it way more than what we're hoping. So we're still ahead of the game.
But I don't think we're, I really don't think that we're, I think we're getting beat bad, still to this day with, with the people out there putting water lines. I, I just feel we're getting beat bad, and then when these guys that are putting the lines out, I don't think nobody's sitting there really watching them bore beneath the road or where they're putting the stuff, because I still got a problem that, that yes, there's a lot of money coming off of permitting, off of the county line, off of pipes and stuff on roads, but what costs more is the damage they do to the roads, because they throw them out over the, in the ditches and the water has no place to go, because the pipes are plugging up the drainage pipe, or they're plugging up the road, so it's usually flooding the road, and, or the road, or the pipe gets picked up by the rain and moves into the middle of the road, and then we're having to block the traffic and do other things. I just think we need to pretty pay more attention to it, to them as well. I know for a while, you had, you had issues with the 911 addressing where, where people weren't actually getting a qualified address, and I think maybe, David, maybe she's talked to you about it, I don't know, but you've got people in this county that don't have, that have a, that don't have addresses that are on certain roads, you made comment about that.
You can't make someone, I have tried to get people to get an address, you cannot make someone, if they don't have it, I've actually had people, I've lived this all my life, I don't want, and I can't make them, I can do it myself.
Have you got, when you provided a copy of an ordinance or something to initiate that at one time? Then you get something from another county?
I don't know what's hard, but I don't.
Is there some county that there's far as people gives them like a year or 90 days?
Oh, I had, no, it wasn't for me, I don't believe that, it was someone before me, but I mean, if you want me to do that, I don't have a problem going and telling people that you have to. I mean, I have people wanting to fight me.
I'm just, I'm just asking because.
Right. When you measure their, their things, and you come up with the correct 911 address, people do not want to change their address. It makes them angry, because they're like, I had one, and he's a law officer, and he and his wife were very angry because their address was old years ago, or was wrong years ago. And when we told them they needed to change it, they both came in my office, and I'm like, look, I'm just doing a job, just as you would have to handcuff me if I had, you know, if you had to do that. They don't like changing stuff. We try, we do the best we can. You cannot force someone to, we try.
While you were commenting a while ago, that the amount of permits taken in for Roden Bridge last month covers more than covers y'all salaries. You really can't make that comparison, because Roden Bridge permit income goes into Roden Bridge for y'all's.
Well, we understand, but we're, I understand that, but we are doing the work for it and chasing it down. And as far as, Mr. Shelby, back in a tube, when you said something about there's, I keep a spreadsheet, and I call the people before it's due, and the guys like it, all the companies are no longer hiding from me, they're not anything. I call them, I'm like, okay, you're going to be due, like one guy came in like a couple weeks ago, I'm like, no, 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 it was not until June 27th. So he's going to come back in, we do his permits then. But because I'm doing the spreadsheet, and then I highlight when they pick up their things, I'm, that's how I'm tracking things down, and I'm out going around. And as far as, we had a permit on an address recently, the company complained about the guy putting the pipe in. I went out there, I saw nothing wrong. Michael came out there, he saw nothing wrong. You know, the company did the 18 inch pipe, put the ends in. For some reason, the guy just didn't like it that went out there, but the guy did follow the rules, the company did. And most companies are very good and willing to pay us, you know, and if you want, a lot of companies will, if you let them do an open cut, they'll put another culvert pipe in there if you wanted to, and this way it wouldn't touch your culvert pipes. They'll do an open cut, and put the pipe in, and then run their stuff through their own pipe, so if that's what you want. But y'all have to agree to it, because they don't mind. I mean, that's cheaper to them than doing a bore they set. And if you put it where you need the location, I still have this room, sorry.
Comment, committee did make may about passing orders to make people comply with the 911 address, was brought before the commission court about three years ago, and the commission court voted not to do that. It's three or four years ago. And the reason I know that is because I brought it up, because nobody understood the program, and it's not mandatory, so it's not mandatory for everybody, you're probably, you're not going to have near the participation that you want.
This is a jump off the subject, but something else that I've instructed the ladies to do is to come up, actually to go back as far as we can find issued permits on road bores and make a database of all the road bores under the county roads, so Roden Bridge or someone 10 years from now, in case some of these sites, frequently when an oil company ceases production, they may just abandon the line, and they may no longer maintain it, they may no longer have it flagged as to where it is. So what I've asked them to do is come up with an identification of all the road bores and all the locations on the county roads, so we can catalog those, so Mike or whomever is dealing with this, and I know they're supposed to be in them of four feet deep and this, that, and the other, but having that information available may prevent some issues in the, in the future, in terms of not having information. It goes along with what the court has been looking at on these oil leases. Things were done, no record was kept of it. Now, we have records, but you have to sift through them all to find it. And what I've asked them to do in their, in their spare time, and whatever time they have extra, is to come up with a database of all the road bores that we can identify going back. So that would give Roden Bridge and/or two members of the county an idea wherever there are pipeline crossings.
And Shelby, if y'all want to make them do, I mean, a lot of companies would like to cut the road, put a pipe in, and you come through there. So that's all pretty, y'all just tell us what to do, the guys are willing to work with us. And like I said, they're coming in, I call them, I'm like, okay, you're due, they're coming up, within two or three days, they're all coming in. And we do check out other complaints, not just ours, when we get a phone call, because we have to, we get a lot of extra calls.
All right. This is not nothing to do with budget, but I guess, Helen, you were like a budget administrator, correct, I'm a special project person?
That department was called special projects when I took it over, but it, like I said, it involved the floodplain administrator, it did the permits for septic and development under that title.
Used to, there were other duties assigned to the special projects person. They used to be the septic coordinator and other miscellaneous items, and I think that's why the title was assigned as just special projects.
Do you have a comment, question?
Thank you.
Good job.
And if you want them to do that, can y'all let me know, we'll start with culverts and stuff, if y'all want it, just let us know, please.
I have received no requests for commissioners as far as their budget changes, so that's why you're on here. So in case you have something you'd like to change, let's hear it.
Like I told you when I said the commissioners to me, there's not a, there's nothing to change, I think the travel should all stay the same, hadn't been, it's not going to have been election years, we don't need to be going to Austin, nothing to travel, and quite frankly, the commissioners don't need to raise, they can stay the same salary they're at, so I see nothing to change. And I totally agree.
Change has no difference between you not here and the commissioner.
Well, he needs to get here and talk, whether we talk to him. We got, I understand.
Any, any unused funds in all of these just revert to the county, you know, they.
Any unused funds in general fund accounts go back to the general fund. Roden Bridge goes to Roden Bridge. Emergency management goes to emergency management. Library goes to library.
I guess what I'm asking in essence is, you know, the departments have asked for various and sundry things, and again, I think this is the case, but if, if they don't expend all of those funds, those funds are not left in the department, I think.
No, sir, but being new, you'll be surprised, the last three months of the year, everybody starts spending whatever they think they have left in their budget.
You think this says US Army?
This is government, and people are afraid that if they don't spend it, they won't get it allocated back to them in next year's budget.
Okay, I understand.
Wrong, but all the commissioners think, that's my, that's my personal opinion, so I can speak for the three.
The only thing, the only difference between federal government and this, the county government, is at the end of fiscal year, if you have any surplus funds, they're gone, nothing carries over to next year. Here, apparently there are some instances where the funds carry over to their next year.
They may carry in their fund balance, but they don't carry to their expenditures unless requested. For instance, if the library has $10,000 they have not spent, it goes to that department's unencumbered fund balance. If there's $5,000 left in the auditor's budget, that excess goes back to the general fund, unencumbered fund balance.
It's only the libraries, right, the one?
It's libraries, it's Roden Bridge, it's emergency management.
So Roden Bridge has $10 million at the end of the year that they have not executed or obligated, then it just wipes out on September 30th or 30th?
It goes into their unencumbered funds. It does not roll over to spend next year unless that's been specifically itemized.
So specifically itemized, it rolls over. I mean, there's a procedure, there's a procedure to follow.
It's like we were talking earlier, if, for instance, Roden Bridge, let's just say Mike has $5 million at the end of this fiscal year. At the close of the year, it goes into unencumbered fund balance. For his budget request for fiscal year 16, if he says, I'm going to have $5 million left over that I know is going into unencumbered, I want to spend it, then we budget it out of unencumbered funds. We don't just add it to his dollar, where we then have to allocate enough ad valorem taxes to cover it.
I understand, but it's a portion for him, it's an accounting, it's an accounting thing. But it actually does, if he does say, I want to spend that $5 million, I mean, he's probably going to do it this year, and you can tag it anything you want to, but it's still a roll over.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's unencumbered funds. But any rollover, we tag, so we don't assess ad valorem taxes to cover that year's total expenditures.
Back to the commissioner situation for a minute, and I think I made this, hopefully I made this clear, but I certainly agree with Shelby. Most of us knew what we were getting into, or had an idea when we were elected, we knew what the pay scale was. I don't think, I personally, I can't speak for anyone else. I'm not asking for any additional money, probably won't use any of the travel expense, I'll cover that myself, but that's my decision. If the others decide to, that's fine, not an issue, but I think that we need to stay right where we are. That's the reason you didn't get any requests, because no one was unhappy.
Excuse me.
I didn't request anything, sorry, but I did.
They said this is what it is.
Any other comments? Maybe the court? Let's move on.
That's the reason you didn't get any requests, because no one was unhappy.
I didn't request anything, sorry.
They said this is what it is.
Any other comments? Maybe the court? Let's move on. What have we not discussed? Roaden Bridge, gee, we don't even need to bother with it. Mike can fill us in, and there he is, ready.
Ready to go. Basically, everything in my budget stayed the same, except for personnel. I got up here last year trying to get personnel, and the situation's still there. I need flagmen, grass is growing out of, I didn't even think about it. Anyway, I need mowers, I need brush cutters, I need everything. Mother Nature's got everything growing wild. Now, what I'm looking for is five laborers and five truck drivers. What I'm up against, and I'm going to give you a little scenario of what we've got at Roaden Bridge, so everybody kind of gets an understanding of it. What we have is Monday through Thursday, I have four operators, two Class A drivers, no Class B drivers, and three labors. That's on Mondays, or Tuesdays, Monday through Thursday. Tuesday through Friday, I have three operators, three Class A drivers, two Class B drivers, and two labors. Now, Wednesday through Thursday, all these are combined into one, so I actually have 19 people out there Tuesday and Thursday. Other than that, Monday I have nine people to run 500, because tomorrow, and Friday I have 10, I got one extra. And what it is, is we are now having to use a lot of flagmen, and that's where our personnel is going. We are actually putting primer down. When you put primer down, we do half of the road on one county road, and we have to move to another county road, so this is going to give it time for that half to dry. And then vice versa. Well, you got to have two flagmen on each county road. So if we're doing three roads, I got to have six flagmen out there flagging. So what I have to do is I have to either take a truck driver or shoot an operator, which I try real hard not to do that, but I get them out there and we get this thing done, because we have to prime the roads before we seal them. We don't prime them, it ain't going to stick. It'd be like gum on baby powder. Anyway, that's what the process on that, that's where those five come in. We are spending crazy money on water. We've got a vacuum truck, and we've got another water truck, but I need drivers for it. We're short handed. If I got two drivers calling sick, say on Monday, well, I don't have no drivers. So what I do is take my operators, in which some of them have Class A, and I put them on a truck, well, that's when I have to shut down blade. That's just kind of where we're at right now. We're trying our best, we do not have the personnel. Same thing on Tuesdays. I have, we'll say, a blade man, two blade men calling sick on Friday, or scheduling vacation order, there's one operator, one blade man, that's all we got on Friday. But during Tuesday, Wednesday through Thursday is when we actually have the full crew. And that is the biggest request I have right now, is getting five drivers and five flagmen because the flagmen, I could, they're universal. I could put them in the shredders, I could put them in the brush cutters, and then when they're not doing that, they could flag, if it's rained or whatever, I could still get them on the brush cutters. That's what I've been doing. And we've had a lot of rain, a lot of crazy rivers, right? But anyway, that's where I'm going with that. And that's going to probably be my major expenses, is going to be the labors. And what I did was, I kind of roughed out the idea of last year, I think the one that came out of like $200,000 or an employee or something like that, when we did the numbers. And I'm here again this year trying to do it, you know? I've got to have the personnel. I've got to get the mowing done, I've got to get the brush cutting, plus I have to do the flagging. And it wasn't bad, but we had an incident that these oilfield workers, they drive like maniacs out there, and my blade man was backing up around a dump truck, and he decided to crowd the blade operator, where you can't see that little truck while you're sitting in that big old blade. Very good job there. And anyway, he bumped the truck. And if there would have been a flagman around there, he could have held everybody back before this even happened. But luckily, it, I've got it taken care of. And that's my point as far as the labors, or the extra employees. The next one is my sign tech. He's right now the lowest paid person out there. He makes $13.41. He takes care of every sign in the county, and I'm sure y'all are all aware, half of them ain't even up yet. We just now finished after a year doing our speed limits because we take him off, and we throw him on the mower, and we throw him on the brush, but we use him just like we do the mechanic and everybody else. We take everybody wherever we need them, but when there's a piece of equipment down, they got to go. I mean, we got to get it fixed, same thing, we're trying to get all stop signs down. Try to do that, by the time you do your line locates and everything, you know, heck, you're looking at three days before you can actually go put a post in the ground, and that's my law. So I'm trying to get him at least to 1425, because my labors right now only making 1374. That puts him ahead of us. I'm trying to get a mechanic, that's my other one. We have paid some crazy money on little things like fixing the tarp, adjusting brakes. I mean, have you seen some of them invoicing, didn't blow your mind? But you have to be a certified person to do brakes adjustments because of DOT. So what I'm doing is, I'm trying to get a mechanic, a diesel mechanic, where we can start saving some money and stop taking all the stuff to the vendor, spending thousands and thousands of dollars just on labor. Because I tell you what, I glanced through some of the invoices, and I think we could have paid three times of what we spent out there. So I figure roughly, I'm kind of looking at him about 2250 an hour. Hopefully, that's a good number, and kind of going to determine on what we get.
Can furnish your own tools?
No, sir, we'll have to furnish the tools, because everybody uses them, it's just not him. It's just the same thing we do, we've got a service person right now. The only thing is, the service person, he changes oil, breaks, broken hydraulic lines, minor stuff like that, radiator hoses and stuff, but he does not know anything about the actual engine. And now with this def, this recycling, rejuvenation, whatever you want to call it, totally different ballgame. Because we spend a lot of money taking these trucks to San Antonio to get it fixed, and all it is is one little sensor that costs about a hundred dollar. But if we have the technology and the equipment, man, we could save fortune.
Mike, on that there, you have the 468 as your requested amount for salary for the mechanic two. Underneath it, you have current, which is zero because we don't have one, but then you have additional 312. What's that additional 312?
The bottom, very bottom.
Yeah. What it is is, oh, let me see, let me see. Okay, that's what I was looking at, if we're going to end up having to get a vehicle, I didn't fall into that. Because we'll have to get a mechanic truck.
Don't we have one?
Nope, we got one mechanic in that one truck, but we're going to need two of them. Because we got a broken hose on one end of the county, and he's at the yard trouble shooting, he's out of one. And we have two yards, we have one yard in Gillette, we have one over here in Kitten.
So based on the salaries survey, the mid-range for mechanic two is 1790 per hour, but you're requesting 2250?
Yes, because I need a mechanic that's going to get a bunch of certifications, and we need to pay him according to the certification, especially with the brakes.
Going to get them or going to already have them when hired?
Hopefully, have them when he's hired.
Okay, so if not, do you include something in training for him to get those certifications?
Well, what I figured is I'll trade this year and see if I could play my cards and see if I could get somebody there. Because I mean, it's no use hiring somebody that has nothing, and then we got to spend $10,000 on him getting the certification. I'd rather sit back a year and find somebody that has everything that we need. It's not the best salary, but it's a long-term salary, and that's what I'm hoping for.
But you also mentioned that we would provide tools, equipment, et cetera. Is that included in your request also?
That's included in our parts and everything, because we buy tools already. I mean, everything's already being purchased through.
Well, I think if you're going to hire a mechanic, if you can possibly hire one already certified, you're better off, because typically what happens if you hire a learner and get him his certifications, then he's looking for his next job already.
Yes.
And so if one comes to you fully qualified, you know he's looking for a job that he might stay at rather than looking to learn on your nickel and then move on down the line.
Exactly, that's why I got the 2250. I'm hoping that the guy finally tired of the long hours in the oil field, he ready comes to something where he sits in 40 hours or whatever, and that's what I'm trying to look for.
Because I understand if you had two crews, you basically have two crews.
Two crews, yes, sir.
Okay. And so the crews are working four, each crew is four, they work four.
Four tenths, yes, sir.
Fine. Why don't you have 19 people all working 40 hours or whatever?
They ought to all work at 40 hours. There were 10 hours a day.
You're not, you're missing my point. Why don't you have everybody, everybody working all week to 40 hours, instead of working a 10-hour day, you work until you, the job is done, you got to pay them overtime, you pay them overtime, but you got, you got a full 19 people working every day.
Because everybody would basically get 10 hours comp time every week. Because we worked four tenths.
I understand that.
You're talking about working an eight-hour workday.
You know, working out with the commission court, if you need to, if you need to pay these guys overtime instead of comp time, because you're shorthanded on each end of the week.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, and it doesn't make any sense to me, be shorthanded on, you know, two days a week, and you've got grass, it's got to be shredded, you've got roads, roads got to be played, you got, you know, hoses that have to be replaced, you got all kinds of things going on, and on each end of the week, you're short four feet.
When I got hired here, they wanted somebody here five days a week, and they told me to come up with a plan.
Who's that?
Commissioner's Court.
I do not, I.
I was, that was in the interview session. And that's when I told them I could, I could perform, is they'll have somebody here five days a week, and we've got them five days a week in case of emergency. The way it was before I got here, they worked Monday through Thursday, there was nobody here.
Well, let me tell you that, let me suggest this, I can't tell you anything, but let me suggest this. It ain't getting done.
Why not?
And that plan's not working for the county. And if you're going to, if you're going to run a horse that's a dead horse, I mean, we're on, you know, we're going back.
The way I look at it is like this, if we work 10 hours, you got an hour to the job site and an hour back. So you got eight hours in the day they're actually getting done. The other way, you're looking at six hours, and six hours, and then when the trucks have to sit at the pit and wait, because there's a whole bunch of trucks in front of them, you never get anything done.
You're not getting anything done down, this plan ain't working.
Then a little more than we should, because we're working that extra hour and working.
Also, when we get to it, I'd like, you've got a lot of equipment over there, some of them new, some of them not new. And you got more equipment than you got people you can put to seat.
Yeah, all I did was replace basically that was there, except for the distributor and the brush cutter. Everything else was already there when I got there. And the distributor's working out real good priming these roads.
You mentioned that, and I'm well aware of this, that the new technology and our blessings from EPA require the depth fluid and all of that with the multitude of sensors. I know that there are a few older pieces of equipment, but those should be fairly simple as compared to current stuff. Isn't most of your stuff still in warranty, Mike? Isn't a lot of this new stuff in warranty? I mean, you shouldn't be having to, I mean, I understand the fact that one sensor can stop the thing, but if it's in warranty, somebody, i.e. the dealer, should be taking care of that, do they not?
Everything that's in warranty, the dealer takes care of. And a good example, the mechanic truck, driving along 60 miles an hour, and then it went down third just out of nowhere. We couldn't even drive, we barely got it up on the low boy, we took it to San Antonio with one sensor, an hour later it was finished. The problem is, I have to send.
I understand.
People over there, the truck over there, well, there takes two guys right there, you know? And then, an hour later, they called us, said it was ready.
Yeah, I understand that, since we don't have a dealer close by.
They do cover warranty real good, everything that's in warranty, we make sure, we let them know, and we want paperwork. We get paperwork.
I, I think that that's, you know, probably good, and I'm trying to come up with the next question, and the next question is, on all of this new heavy equipment, do you have extended warranty to five years or 500,000, or what are they warranty to?
No, sir, we got the standard warranty with everything, and so far, everything's been working good. In which, the maintainers are basically the only ones.
Yeah.
The trucks, we just got them, we invited extended, because it was outrageous, it was like $10,000.
Well, I was going to say, if it's, you have to balance one off against the other to then that. I see on, of course, we've been talking about labor, and I've gone to the next page. I guess as we're dealing with labor, do you think that there is availability of labor? I mean, if you're asking for these extra positions, do you think they can be filled in today's economy?
A lot of it's going to determine on what the starting pay scale is going to be, in which that's something that we all heard some talk about the other day. If the starting pay scale would be 1374, I think I could get it, the labor part. The truck driver part, a lot of people come in and they stop, they stay here about a month, two or three months, and can't make it, because, you know, here, oilfields are unlimited on hours, here, 40 hours. And we do, if we got an extended day, we're out there, we tell them, work it, work it till we finish. You know, some guys might make 50 hours in that week, and they got 10 hours comp time, but they always tell you, comp time don't pay the bills. In which, I know where they come from.
Truck drivers are premedonous anyway, for the most part.
Yes, right now, they are, yes. And then if you find some good ones, you know, they don't, they don't stick around, they don't come in here while they're looking, and they'll.
I'm aware of it, flat, two weeks ago, I, one of my personal helpers, they, one of my buddies got laid off, and he speaks good English and has a CDL. That was Friday evening, I called him Monday morning, he already got a job, you know, finding a CDL, a good, qualified Class A CDLs.
Well, you figure ours is 1825, and they going to make 25 an hour.
Yeah.
Math.
I looked at your request for equipment, and without slicing or dicing it, I guess the only issue I have is, is you have predetermined that you're going to buy two particular model Peterbills. And I know we've had this discussion before, and I think you assured us all that you and perhaps Mr. Underbreak were going to come up with a bid process whereby we could look at what was available and not buy a specific model, but buy a good quality piece of machinery at the least cost, put it like that.
Right, right. Well, which all this is off the buy board.
I know, I know, but.
And like I said, if the court wants me to go out there and take bids, we can take bids. The only issue that we have is, we've already dealt with certain types, and they've become just a total breakdown process. And what we're trying to do is eliminate breakdown time.
Well, I understand that, but in dealing with this, and I have nothing against Peterbilt and Caterpillar, but you are buying a lot of paint name in both of those. I mean, they're good quality, but they're like buying John Deere. John Deere has, you know, you get the privilege of paying for that green paint. And I know, and I don't fuss about buy board. I did get a case of fuss yesterday from Mr. Alexander about not being able to bid on any of this stuff, and so I think sometimes we should throw the bids open in case they choose to. And I realize it's almost impossible for a local dealer to outdo what's on buy board or what some of the fleet people have. That having been said, what we need to look at in buy board are two or three comparable models of different makes that would serve the same purpose rather than saying, "I'm going to go for this one." And I understand the benefit of standardization, I understand that. If you have all of one model, all of one make, all of it, because I, to some degree personally do that, but I have the privilege of being able to choose what I want to choose rather than the least cost.
What I look at, I look at all kinds of things when I buy it. And basically, the one that I look at the hardest is part availability, and how fast they can get a mechanic to me, or I can get it to them. Because right now, if I took a truck and put it in the shop, it would sit there on the lot probably about two, three weeks, just parked. And a good example, we had another belly dump at the Penn. example, we had another belly dump that the pins busted, and it bit everything up, and basically, the company went out of business, so there was only one option, I called around every machine shop that we do business with, and everybody said it'd be two months, well, it sounds crazy, but Hope was one of the machine shops we called, and they said we can get it in two weeks, I said, well, this truck, we threw it up underneath another trailer, we're using it, but we need the belly dump so we can start hauling the dirt again, and this is what we run up against, you know, and I try, I try getting a low bid, the best bid, but then I have to also look at how fast I can get a mechanic, because when that truck breaks down, I need to get that truck back on the road, and that's the hardest thing, especially right now with the oil field now, five years ago, yeah, I would've said that'd be-
Most of the major truck dealers in San Antonio have a mobile shop, if you want to call it, so I, I realize that perhaps one is a bit better than the other, but anyway, when, when you, if the budget is approved as you've given, and you get this additional equipment, I personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the fellows, but I'd like to see some comparisons, rather than just a single item purchase of half of a thing, and a set of standardized specs, a certain displacement engine, a certain, you can specify if you want a super tan Road Ranger, or whatever you want in terms of transmission, 40,000 pound airbag, assembly rear end, this, that, and the other, but take a look at whatever else is out there, other than just one particular model.
These conversations always turn into a trip, I've been sitting here for seven years, and these conversations always turn into what equipment, what truck we're buying, how much it costs, we need a mechanic, we need a flagman, I've lived here 27 years on a county road, and my road is identical, or worse, than it was 27 years ago, and I, I'm just a little confused at why we get trapped into this mentality of equipment, is it, is it fun, is it because we're all guys, and we like to talk about trucks and getting fixed, and, or do we look at the problem, and how to address it, and how to solve it? I have the unique ability to live right on the border between Goliad and Karnes, and I, I go out my front gate, I go two miles down to Karnes County Road, and it's shit, sorry to use that term, but it is, it's crap, the other gate, I can't even get down to Karnes County Road, when it rains a half an inch, I get to the Goliad County Line, and it turns to chip seal material, and, and they drilled 10 wells out there and used that same road, and it didn't cost $400,000 a mile to build it, they probably spent $500.
They spent $11,000 according to their commissioner when they retreated, and the only thing they have to do is shred it about three times a year, and they do it, and it looks like a dead gum state park.
It's, it's amazing.
We get it out of it, no problem.
I, I invite everybody out there, I'll provide the-
It's a great comparison, we have to live on the county, on the water lines of Wheat County too, and I can tell you, our county road, having an 86-year-old neighbor who was born, raised, raised his family, his daughter's in the house now, he's passed away, and everybody out there tells you, it is, is a saint, if not worse, every time we get a tenth of an inch of rain, three tenths of an inch of rain, we have to call in and shut down our business.
But, but the, the point is, it's not about us, but the point is, what are we doing with, with the road and bridge, and, and is, because none of y'all live on a county road, so you really don't understand.
And we're worried about signs, we don't need any signs, I don't need another stop, and they stuck a stop sign in the middle of the county roads, all they do, people do, is either knock them down, steal them, or shoot at them, I mean, we got $100,000 in this last year's budget for signs, and he's worried about a sign tech and paying him as much as our tax assessor wants.
Yeah, you count them on.
It's crazy, it's crazy to think about, you know, the progress, where is a plan? A five-year plan?
Hang, hang on, has anybody asked him, for, for the money we spent, what we've gotten done, has anybody said how many miles are paved, or what, what have you accomplished for $20 million?
Yeah, 22 million dollar budget last year.
And no, and nobody says-
His projection for 2014 was 30 miles of seal coat, if, nobody knows, did, did the contract fall through, did they default on it, Mr. Chapman stood up there and told me we were still moving through on it, but he had the money reappropriated, 1.9 million dollars for seal coat with blacktoppers, are we gonna get it done? Does anybody know, or we just write that 30 miles off for 2014?
We, we, what is, we're talking about roads, I'm talking about roads, you know?
Well, we're talking about the whole thing.
We're talking about equipment for 30 minutes.
You know, you can tell me anyway, before we're gonna talk-
What it is, is-
It's probably accountability.
Seal coat is starting today, they're supposed to be hauling the material to the side.
Big text.
Big text, right.
That's a 2015 contract.
Right, the 1314 blacktopper defaulted.
Well, the last time Mr. Chapman was standing right there, he said, we're, we're still holding them to it.
They're holding them to the contract, but if they don't wanna do it, they're gonna go into a lawsuit, and you know what happens when there's a lawsuit?
Well, then that money should be reappropriated and rebidded, and the 30 miles should be, it should be redone, and you just ask for, or wanted to put it back in your accounts so you can run the lead.
It's, it's, it's still in the account, it hasn't ever come out of your account, it's in the Brooklyn Bridge special, the only thing is, if I have to have Commissioner's Court sit there and tell me, go ahead, let's rebid it, let's do something.
They're not gonna tell you, you have to propose the plan.
Well, if they're going with the lawsuit, we gotta see what the guidelines are with the lawsuit.
That's the problem, we have no plan, there's no accountability.
All right, excuse me, excuse me, I'm gonna have to leave for Dr. Farno, I'll make a few comments, this contract, it has to be done legally, and the lawyer's working on it, and I have my opinion that it should just be dropped, we should get out of it without a lawsuit, any way we can, and just go ahead and get it done however we can, that's what we're gonna try to do, okay, so.
Do we have a five-year plan, do we have a scope and sequence of plan for the roads?
Okay, no, no, we don't have-
You know, or are we gonna die and it's gonna make sense?
We don't have a five-year plan, but the other, I just wanna comment on a few things that he said, I'm, I'm for giving him more labors and more truck drivers, I don't know about five a beat, but some, I know the sign tech is a hustler, he's a worker, and he deserves a little raise, I'm forgiving labors, I also agree partly with what Mr. Yoder wanted, eight-hour day, I think we oughta work eight-hour days, and have a couple of people on standby every weekend, so we have someone for Saturdays, when we have a storm or something, I'm of the opinion that we get just as much work done with eight-hour days, it's not an hour getting to the job every day, but it's at least a half hour from where they're, cut the equipment situated, but I'd like to tie it in with getting an eight-hour day and giving him more labors, that's my opinion, I haven't discussed it with the other commissioners, so they're, I've discussed it with Mike before, and he's convinced that the 10-hour day is a better work schedule, so.
That's fine, Steve, the labors are fine, we need a plan.
Those are, those are opinions, and, and we have to get together on that, so those are part of my opinion, I'm gonna go through the rest of this, and, and I'll discuss it with Mike, and, but I do have a place to go.
Okay, the pre-trip, uh, the hour in the morning, the hour in the evening, they got a pre-trip inspection that's required by tech talk, that's a half hour, if there's a light out, they have to fix it, they can't watch it with the light broken, and then you got your post-trip, when they come back, they gotta fill, they gotta make sure everything's good to go when they walk there, there's an hour right there.
So, you're talking good truck driver?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I did that, for a living, and it doesn't take a half night for pre-trip, post-trip, I'm here to tell you, I did it every day, number two, you need to, you need to get 19 guys or 20 guys or whatever, but here's the objection I have to your request for additional people, I can go downtown to Kennedy on a number of occasions, or I go to Alamo Lumber, HEB, Tractor Supply, and once, at least twice a week, I will see at least two of your guys in Alamo Lumber, one of them sitting up sucking on a sofa pot, the other's got an oil filter in hand, or a piece of wood, and it don't take two people to do that, typically, they go in pairs, and your sign painter's one, every time, if they're not, if they're at HEB at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, 10 o'clock in the morning, he ain't doing signs or driving a truck or anything, he wasting time sucking on sofas.
Well, I, I think, I think basically-
Hold on a second.
Well, I think these guys need to, I mean, they need to direct him, I mean, if you guys, if the intention is to pave the county roads, or, you, you guys gotta come up in your mind with, with what you want for the county road, do you want dirt roads, because if you want dirt roads, tell me, and I'll, and I'll do something else with my time, or if, or if you wanna, you know, progress into the future where we're not driving down crap mud roads, you know, then, then we need to have a plan, and we need to sit down and talk about it, we need to get together, and I can show you how, how a good county operates, and how a crap county operates, and, and how you can get there, and not $400,000 a mile, I mean, I could do that for you.
Now, on this budget, you have 19.9 million dollars, roughly 20 million dollars, and it's categorized under road material, equipment, contractors, and break, there's nothing, there's no accountability there, there, there's nothing in saying, you know, this is where I'm gonna get the material, this is how much it's gonna cost, you know, Goliath County uses the unit system, and every one of those commissioners files a report every month, of what was done in their precinct, and that would require some more accountability on all of your parts, of, of knowing what is being done, where we're progressing, and, you know, you got one man here making all of the decisions.
Right.
And he comes up and tells you what he's doing with 22 million dollars.
I'd be embarrassed.
Shout out on that 19 million, just for clarification, there was budget adjustments done either November or December, where he had to come back and itemize how those 19 million were done, it's not still in a 19 million dollar lump.
We, we've watched.
But there, there are a couple of questions I have as far as your budget request numbers, Mike, and I don't know if you can wing it off the top of your head, but-
I doubt it.
But I, I want to bring these things up, the commissioners may, or what's left, may not have looked at them, but these are things to look at, under road signs, you have $100,000 for next year's request, and that's what's in this year's budget, but we've only spent 22.8, why 100,000 if-
What it is-
Three quarters of the year, three, we've only spent-
Yeah, there's a lot more, what we did on the, we haven't even finished yet, but we haven't had it in time, what it is, is we've only put the speed limit signs on the outskirts, when you turn off the FM road onto the Tannure, that's where we put the speed limit, we haven't gotten to do the inner part of the county road, because we can't hit the-
What's the point?
Yeah.
Why, why do you need a speed limit sign on it, Mr. Wozniak, we never even see a patrol out there.
State law does not require, if you have a, a smoke, I mean, a speed sign on a county road, state law does not require that, what state law does require is that it's, that it's speed limit be established and, and publicly recorded, which you can do in the newspaper, you only have to do that twice a year.
Doesn't cost a hundred grand.
It don't, that costs a hundred thousand dollars, you got Mr. Underbrink, that guy's cost us a lot of money.
A million dollars.
And we have gotten virtually nothing for that, why do we still have him on payroll?
Well, don't ask him, ask him, the question's not in here.
He should be boss.
Hell, he can have it for him.
I'll, I'll get down to that line item in a minute.
Well.
Let me go in order, so I don't miss specific things I wanna ask, Mike, two-way radios, 65,000 is in this current budget, you put that same thing in for next year's, but yet we have not spent anything.
Right.
I thought we had radios in all the vehicles.
That was moving the transponder, they still haven't given me a dollar, what I was gonna do is move the transponder from the tower out on 72, and see if we can put on Sheriff's Tower, that would save us a fortune, but I do not know the cost, and they have never given me the cost, and-
Is there only one-
But honestly, that's a pretty good project in Baltimore, I, I don't know.
Is there only one company that does that, you said they have a-
S and P is the one that the sheriff's office uses, and that kind, and I just stayed with what the sheriff was doing, because it works.
Okay, building repairs and maintenance, you have $50,000 as a request, and you've spent 22.6 this year, what kind of maintenance needs to be done to what building for $50,000?
The tin, Pete's aware of it, but we lost our man, Zane, so Pete's in the process of seeing if he can get a contractor, we need to get the tin replaced, and right where we have our brand new sign machine, it's leaking water right where the two buildings come together, we got a water leak in there, we just got just a lot of issues with it, it's a little-
So this is just a really pull-out-of-the-sky number, there's no estimate associated with-
Well, it started out with a number that Zane gave me when he was here at the time, and he said it'd be approximately 50,000, so I put it in, but it might be higher, it might be lower, I would not know.
And you build it for that?
Exactly.
Why don't we?
Well, you got to tear it down and replace it, that's probably what the cost is, and it's of the whole thing, and they were gonna bring the gable part across the front, so we don't have that leak joint here.
Yeah, then we build another touch wall.
Okay, under parts, your request is 61,000, does that 61,000 include the tools for the maintenance?
Yes, it does.
Tag two, if one is acquired.
Yes, includes the tools, the jacks, everything that we need, it, it includes all of that.
So with all the new equipment you have, once warranties expire, are we going to have to acquire computer testing equipment to be able to diagnose?
Yeah, but that'll be in the future, right now, I need to get a mechanic that can even do that first, before I can even-
General engineering, you have a request for 500,000, 100,000 is in this year's budget, what are we gonna have to engineer that's gonna increase our cost by?
What I'm trying to do is engineer the plans, like for seal coat, we'll use that for example, we can do the plans for seal coat this year, and have it ready for bidding at the end of the year, so we're not rushing into it, getting a design, bidding, and everything at once, and end up with a repeat of what we did with, with big, big blacktoppers.
Of course, we could have a estimate now for seal coat.
Right.
And we could have two hurricanes between now and then, and then, so that estimate would be worthless.
Well, if, 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 if we're going to do a seal coat project, what he does is, whether we have a hurricane or not, it's still gonna cost that much for that road, if it's not approved through Commissioner's Court, the plans are still there, and it, the cost is not gonna change, and the plans are still there.
A little cost to get the road-
Right, it's gonna cost to do the plans, and that's it, that's the-
Why don't we hire an engineer from Texas A&amp;M, my gosh, in heaven's sakes, a lot, surely you can realize that 500,000 dollars expires.
Can't y'all get that?
Or a billion dollars expires.
I mean, that's the most absurd thing.
I mean, the CEO of Tex dot makes 270,000 dollars a year, the head guy, I mean, we are paying, per, the, the engineering services, we could've hired one 15 times over.
And if we have two hurricanes to be re-engineered, what is that?
And the point is, we don't have to use that money, it's just something that's there, it's for me to, if you do plans for a road, rehab a road, same scenario, you're gonna have to spend the money to rehab it.
Mr. Wozniak, I'm, I'm to the Commissioner's Court, you know, there's, there's a variety of subjects, one of the things I see as a citizen is, we spend money, just to spend money, you know, we have Mr. Underbrink, we've got Lorraine Data, and there's no accountability, there's no responsibility, when something goes south on us, we just keep spending money, and, and, and I question the talent that we're hiring, as Mr. and Mrs. Hall said, when there's other talent out there that has to be at least as well-qualified, or perhaps even more qualified, and, and we're just, you were buying Peterbills instead of Freightliners, you know, you're talking about the difference of 20, 30,000 dollars per, per unit, but we're still buying Peterbills, I drove a Freightliner for, for five years over the road, they didn't make any more money than I did, I maintained my vehicle, I didn't have a breakdown, five years, I never had a breakdown, and I drove my truck 100,000 miles a year, you know, I don't understand what we're doing here, I can go to any county that surrounds us, and they've got a very decent road network.
And we paid Mr. Underbrink 260,000 dollars to design one road that was already there, it wasn't like he was designing, I thought, the toll road, you know, 130, brand new engineering project from Tex dot, I mean, I realize these fees are Tex dot fees, as if we had a 2 billion dollar budget, but County Road 211 already existed, for 260,000 dollars, you would think you would be designing a new road through a cornfield.
What'd you get?
You know, it's not like the road had to be redesigned.
There just needs to be some thought put into it.
Well.
Instead of wrestling with this one.
You can do this two ways, we can do it like in the past, we can do lights-
He was about to say something, the past is what you're doing, that's exactly what you're doing, I, I live in, I, I live in it, I live in what you're doing, I experience it every day.
Mr. Wozniak, I've heard that for five years.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna put something on the road and see, and it hasn't happened in five years.
It's finally coming, it's finally coming.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's gonna go in.
I'm of the opinion that whatever work we're committed to with Mr. Underbrink should be completed, but at that point, that should end.
You're done, it's committed, it's already 1747, you're not getting any more money.
I was gonna say, whatever we've got, in other words, that needs to be done, I also am in favor, as Hall said, of hiring a professional engineer that can be done for, in the proximity of 100,000 dollars a year, and give him the first task to, to come up with this plan that you're speaking of, some sort of a, a goal for the future, we can do this, this, and this, because I agree with you, we, and, and, and I'm bad about getting off on nitpicking, if you wanna call it, you, you look at, you look at the, the fun things and don't look at the others, but I, I do believe that we need someone in-house, we're, you know, we're spending several times, as you mentioned, the salary on consultants that we could do in-house.
Well, ask yourself where that money's coming from. Well, ask yourself where that money's coming from. That money's coming from those people that live on those roads that he supposedly fixed. The money's not coming from these guys in here that live in town.
Could I make a brief suggestion about things worth making? I would like the Commissioner's Court to consider having their own or developing their own one-year, short-term, mid-term, and long-term plan for the road network of Carls County. And then you're directing him, instead of him coming in and telling him what he's going to do and hasn't done, and we're still sitting here arguing about it. You know, I mean, like I said, since Mr. Wozniak's been here five years, I've been hearing about I'm going to do this, I'm going to chip seal roads, and we're still waiting on it. I'm suggesting that we reverse the roles and the Commissioner's Court direct...
Mr. Wozniak, I'll be the first to tell you that Mr. Underbring, the inquiry of hiring him was brought about in order to try to get a professional engineer to provide a plan. And I indeed, in fact, had a contract called an improvement project, county improvement project. It was CIP, which was originally why Mr. Underbring was hired. And I have the contract in my files. It was never signed and he got naturd on 1747. And while I could probably tell you how much we paid for that, I know we, you know, had paid him $360,000 prior to any of the road projects we hired him on, but, you know, that was a 1747 plan and that's gone away. We will no longer ever get that money. So consequently, we still, we're, we have no plan.
You're still paying. You're still paying. See, his contract's been fulfilled. And he sits here at every meeting, if you notice, and I would ask you to ask yourself, why does David Underbring sit here? He sits here because he's got a gravy truck. And with you guys...
I want to remind court last year, David, you were, Judge, we're not sitting here enjoying these lovely meetings, although last year they were handled a little bit different. But because of the fact that Judge Butler, at the time, couldn't get satisfactory answers or a plan or whatever from the road and bridge department, that's why the budget was adopted as it was with that lump sum figure of $19 million in there and then later allocated. In my opinion, I'd like to see the dollars specified at the time of proposal, when that's done last working day of August, not giving the leeway of flexibility later on in the year. I want to continue going down my list of questions.
Well, let me clarify one thing. Everybody sits here and says, "I did not have a plan." I had a five-year plan that I presented here in Commissioner's Court. The halls went by my office and personally picked it up. And it was a five-year plan and I presented it to court. And I tried following it.
It's very vague. This is a five-year plan. And that's why Judge Butler did it the way he did it because he had no confidence in your ability. That's why he did the money the way he did.
But it's still a plan. I did not, I'm not going into the same open minded or a...
That's a five-year plan.
Every year, haul out 100 miles, seal coat third.
Dude, that's a plan.
Seal coat third.
Whatever. Make a run at it, please.
Under miscellaneous, Mike, in your request, you have $75,000. I know if I was one setting up here voting on this budget, I'd need much more detail on the $75,000 miscellaneous account. Next is under road materials. Your request is $12,800,000. Part of that, $1 million, is for third-party contractor assistance, labor, and equipment. Yet then you also have a contractor line item for County Road 354, 211, and 262 for $6.5 million. Why are those two separated out?
Okay, the contractor assistant is when we rent the maintainer and an operator or the milling machine or something like, that is assisting us while road and bridge is actually doing the job. Road and bridge is present, we're doing the flagging, the rolling and everything. All we do is rent that one machine to do that one specific job. And that was brought up, that's where we're in that contract that's sitting in Jeff's office still, that DeWitt County has, that we're trying to get over here, and it's still sitting over there.
So based on that estimated request of $1 million...
That's a single Mount Gendash.
But how many hours is that, that you plan on renting?
A lot of it depends on different jobs. The, well, I'll give you a good example. The milling machine is $500 an hour. We milled up probably about 20 roads. Some of them took longer than normal, some of them didn't. A lot of it is the porting that you're mixing in with it to stabilize the road. There is another cost. You've got to have that machine to mix it in.
Excuse me, man. You say that one of those accounts was $6 million?
For contractor, $6.5 million, yes.
For road, spur road?
Or three different roads.
Three different roads.
How many miles of those three different roads? How many miles, total miles of three roads?
Okay, 211 had a million dollar overrun and I had to put it in there because of the fact is, is all the drainage...
How many miles? How many miles?
You're probably looking at about 30 miles.
30 miles of $6 million.
Yeah. And all I'm doing is following the 1747.
Wait, 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 what you said, 211 had a million dollar overrun?
No, it was 3.5.
It's a $3.6 million job.
Yeah, but we only bid it at 2.5 because of all concrete coves that ended up cracked and outdated.
This is, this is... It's comical, actually.
Okay. Mike, going on down to the bottom of your request, the title of the line item, you say new money slash 1747. County Roads 369, 113, and 115, $8 million. 1747 is gone.
Right.
We don't have any money there.
That is why it's way down at the bottom, because there is no more 1747 money.
So then your request shouldn't indicate 1747.
No, that's out.
So has all the repairs, maintenance, rebuilding, et cetera, with 1747 been accomplished?
No, we've got 199 that got blessed, and we've got 326 and 182 that was going to go ahead and it's going to come up here, get everything started, get that big going. We have the bridge work already on 326, the bridge widening already going.
But is that part of 1747?
Yes, that's part of 1747.
So will 1747 be completed by September 30th?
Oh, no, 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 no. There are 300 days is what these contracts are going to run.
So we have the...
They're going to continue...
Availability of the funds passed this fiscal year?
Yes, yes.
You might want to check on that. There is some strong stipulations as to time allotment of reimbursement in 1747.
That's, that's...
Quit interrupting or let her finish.
They're very regulated on the 1747. It's a possibility. If they don't follow the, the exact...
The timeline.
It has to have a maintenance plan. There are some exact stipulations on that bill or they don't have to reimburse you the 7.7 million dollars. And as we've seen with historical commission, it still owes us $93,000, you know.
You're not getting the money.
You'll be lucky if you get the 7.7 back.
We also, for those of you who aren't benefited with what we have, we've been asked for $20,000 for 1747 legislative consultant. If that's dead, why do we need legislative consultant?
Well, we have had a legislative consultant, and it was tagged that because that's how it began, but this last year, our legislative consultant worked very vigorously to get the counties their royalty monies back. Of course, that was accomplished, but it's not accomplished until September of 2017.
That would be in the, okay, is this, is this, what's his name, the former representative?
State House.
Okay.
So then, Mike, if, as we all know, there's no additional 1747 monies, this $8 million that you have allocated here for those three particular roads, are all those roads going to be reworked, paved, chipped, sealed?
It's not happening. Those roads aren't happening because that was in case the 1747, the legislature was talking about there might be some more money. It did not happen. So that was just, that's why it's at the very bottom, because we did not know, and then I finally got the word that we're not getting it. They showed me, come by the office, we all talked about it. It's not happening, but I already submitted this. Otherwise, I would just remove you halfway.
So then, what is the anticipated completion time of our 1747 projects, assuming no mother nature issues?
Yeah, mother nature is going to kill us. We've got, the, most of the jobs are at 300 days. The day they start, they got 300 days.
So when should the rest of these start and what is the anticipated? Is it December?
As soon as the bonding, well, I'm hoping, waiting for then. I'm shooting, hopefully, for July is when we got these kids...
When they'll start.
When they start. And then they're going to go until completing, which is, I think, they get 300 days of mother nature and everything, but they have the days that were tied in.
You're saying 300 days and you're talking 300 work days?
Working days, yes, yes.
Not 300 days.
So again, since we were allotted, awarded the 1747 money of 7.7, irregardless of when these are started or when they are completed, we will get reimbursed that money?
I can't guarantee that because I don't know if they work weather days or not.
But, but that's, no, if we...
I was, I was here when 1747 started. I got here toward the end, and Ronnie, y'all kept Ronnie on to finish 1747.
The application?
Yeah, he did the application, then he did the actual, going to the site and everything. He stuck around for, I think, six months or something like that. He did everything for 1747, and then the day that he left, everything was already completed, everything was blessed in Commissioner's Court.
I understand that, but what were the rules in 1747's award as far as, do we get reimbursed irregardless of when the monies are spent and when the project is completed?
And that I can't answer because I haven't read the whole...
I can suggest to you that there are certain requirements that are established by the state. And I mean, they're very strict requirements. And if we don't follow them, they're not going to reimburse the county.
To give you an example, the number one road is 326. The number two road submitted was 189, and the number three road, what, excuse me, 199 and 182. Out of all those roads, 199 is the only one that they have a bid on. If they change the format or order of that, they have to submit a document to Texas Dots and get approval for any type of adaptation on this document. And if they don't, and if they don't give, and they don't keep a report of the time stipulation, actually on this document, it will tell you that the completion date was supposed to be November of 2014, and December of 2014 was the last to completion, the deadline date on this document for those roads. Now, they're going to give you a little bit of grace because of the LaSalle lawsuit, and they extended out those times a little bit. But the fact, they jumped down and did 211. 211 wasn't on our allotted 7.7 million dollars. That's the road they're working on, that they were spending six point something, you know, that we're spending all that $3.6 million on. It's not even part of the 1747 money. Two of those roads haven't even been bidded out. So my, my question is, is you need to read 1747 because I'd be real surprised if you're going to give the 7.7 back.
The way it is, at 1747, you submitted roads that were going to get rebuilt. There's three roads that were submitted. That was it. The rest of them are nothing unless you get, and this is the order that we're going to follow if we get more money, but when we don't do. So what I'm doing is I'm following that order on a bunch of these roads. 165's been taken care of. I'm just going down because if we never receive any more money...
You're good.
Yeah. My roads are getting done importantly.
You've done one road out of the top three. You've done one road out of the top three.
My theory is that, I talked to a mystery auditor about that, when they actually dig and put a piece of equipment out there and go to work, then I'll come in here and say my report. But hurry got thrown under the bus with this blacktopper. So what it is, is when they actually start the work, I'll come in here and then I'll have more answers. But right now, for me to sit here and say, I don't know when they're going to start or I don't know, they're still in the bonding, in all the bond money and all the paperwork to do.
Okay, so I have two questions. Number one, the $75,000 that you have earmarked for miscellaneous, what does that include?
Miscellaneous includes various things. It goes from, oh, shoot, man, I should have brought the Ida White paper with me. Miscellaneous goes towards, I've got so much stuff going across from me. What do you think?
Excuse me.
Because I think my theory on miscellaneous changed from what the auditors had, and we have to do a bunch of changes on it. I never thought I was going to get hit with that one. That was the least one I was worried about.
It's $75,000 of our money. It's not your money to spend, you should be accountable for it.
All accountable to our money.
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet you are.
Now, Shelby comes in the office, we sit there, we talk all of this. Pete comes in and goes...
I've heard you talking, I might for an hour. I understand completely.
Okay, and on the two roads that are 1747 funded, approved funded, and Mrs. Hall said that you have done one of them, why haven't the other two been started?
We're waiting for the contracts to be signed. What we did, we came to Commissioner's Court and we were going to start 326, but we didn't do that because we didn't want the construction of the road and the construction of the bridge being together. So what we did was we came to the court and said, "We're going to start 199. That way we're on the opposite end of the county, gives him time to get going and get it over with. By the time they get to this job and get it going," that's why when the last one bid, everybody would be off. Well, the drill shaft and the ring and everything, just put the damper on everything there. So what it is, is whether he's done or not, they're going to have to bump heads, but we're trying to do it for the public on that road so they don't have to just go for it of the road and the bridge being all tore up at once and having all kinds of problems.
Okay, so on those two roads, because 326 involves a bridge, you're saying there's three different contracts? And none of them are executed yet?
No, well, we've got the bridge, but as far as the actual roads...
So why isn't one done on 199 or whatever the other...
We're waiting on paperwork between the contractor and getting everything going. They got to get, make sure all the bonding and everything's together.
And we're waiting on that from the contractor?
From the contractor.
So they submitted bids and it was awarded, but the contractor's dragging us in?
Right, and they came over here and we had to get it signed here by Judge Long, and we just did that two weeks ago. We finally got it back because Jeff wanted to review it. So it went to Jeff up there in Austin, and he reviewed it, and we finally got it back. Judge signed it, and we're finally off to the races.
Okay, so now the contractor...
So that took a month out of everything with Jeff reviewing.
Okay, so now the contractor is being waited on to supply his bonds, et cetera?
Yeah, they're, they're in the process already of getting all that taken care of.
Well, the next thing we're going to do is we're going to have another weather delay.
I hope.
I'm just worried that we're not going to get the money we were allocated out of 1747 and it's going to come out of our thumb down.
I hope we do.
But he told you it doesn't matter if you get it or not.
I need to research.
It doesn't matter.
I need to research the weather days on that.
Yes, yes, sir. I'd like to address the court. We've been sitting here for an hour and a lot of discussions been going on with Mike and I've got to say, I'm, most of it doesn't make any sense. But I have one question to the auditor. How much money have we paid Mr. Underbring for 1747? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know. I could not give you an estimate.
It's been a sizable, it's been a sizable piece of change.
Naismith under...
Yeah, we've paid him almost a million dollars.
And for us to pay a consultant almost a million dollars, and we have virtually, what we've gotten done or what we've get paid for on 1747 is going to be probably not worth the money that we paid Mr. Underbring already, but he's been paid. And so here we are again with county, road and bridge, and nothing's gotten done. And here we're, you know, this was money that was a big deal. We've, I mean, the Commissioner's Court really did bust their chops to get that project done and get it in for approval on time. And Ronnie, he worked real hard and and he did a good job. But now it looks like we've done all that for naught.
Slept it off.
Well, and not also, not only the monies that we spent to Naismith Engineering for the project, but you also have to remember the salary and benefits that we paid to Ronnie to keep him on. To get the application completed and chased through the legislature.
We, the biggest, I went did, I did some history and I went back in time and some of our books in the in the clerk's office. And since this county has been around, the biggest issue in this county has been roads. I mean, it's never changed. If you go to Goliad County, you go over to DeWitt County and and they got, and they are on the unit system.
No, Goliad.
B County, B County's got almost ninety nine percent of their roads paid. I'm not talking chip seal, they're paid. They're, they were worth it than we were, but they had a plan and they executed that plan. I'm talking about they being the Commissioner's Court in B County. Not talking about Road and Bridge. The county commissioners went out there and they did their roads and they they got it done. And that's been since I've been here, just five years.
And they did it without all money.
Yeah, they're, I mean, we hadn't got to boom yet.
Y'all didn't live ten years.
Well, that's correct. That's right. I mean, I I wanted to be here five years. But I know, I I traveled to DeWitt County and Goliad County a lot. All material for the, with all these pads out there and Pioneer and everything else. I didn't go down a county road that didn't have chip seal on it and they were well maintained. Some, I mean, I I'm just saying, I've kind of, I mean, I know you're frustrated, you've got to be absolutely tired of hearing this. But he's got the biggest budget in this county. And and we're just not getting anywhere.
You've got actually companies, I don't know if it's a bad issue, but like standard companies like UPS and FedEx. I mean, our UPS driver left and changed any route to B County, although he still lives in Carntons County, he's a resident over at Telenan. But he, after riding through here years, he said he got tired of eating dust and he moved his route to B County. We meet him all the time and he couldn't be happier. I mean, we had a situation trying to get a FedEx package the other day. And in the inquiry of him trying to get down our road and it kept delaying and delivering, delaying and delivering, delaying delivery. We finally tried to bring him in a different route. They continued to try to come through DeWitt County and when we called, they said, you have a tractor so we can pull our 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 driver out. I mean, we're in San Antonio and they want us to come to provide a tractor to pull the FedEx driver out.
Well, it's it's not a joke, but but it's a, it's a process, like Shelby's interested in the EMS and I and I understand that. But if but if you don't have the infrastructure for the EMS to operate in, it it it's kind of a moot point if we spend a million and a half dollars on a building, unless it's just for the people of Kennedy to drive by and look at. And 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 it it seems to me that you would want your your product, which is the oil, to come down the roads and and have a good road system to get to the delivery station to sell the product. And and it seems like we're worried about everything except the road system. And and it's the largest single piece of of budgeted item that that we look at. And and yet, you know, it just becomes a joke and we talk about buying trucks and things like that and we've done for at least as long as I've sat here, we bought a hell of a lot of equipment.
We're replacing equipment that Jeffrey reacted.
That's right, that's what we're doing. And 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 it's it's not getting us anywhere and I can tell you from experience, it's not going to get anywhere unless we we change our thinking, unless we think differently.
And we came to this meetings when Sammy Smith was the first road administrator back when the unit system was first implemented. He had no road knowledge whatsoever, but he was a businessman and he would come up with documents and tell you pictures of showing you each road that he had done. And his analysis was the most, the most expensive thing you could do was lay a road. And his goal as he reduced the equipment and reduced, he operated off of six men.
He sold it off, he sold the equipment off. And he was paving things.
And he he actually was, in his short time, he actually paved more roads than in his short time than than we never had paved. We, they they run a blade and I don't know how much, if you've ever calculated how much it cost you with labor, the cost of the equipment, the cost of the fuel, the cost of driving it out to the end of the county. You blade it, you get two inches of rain and you're right back where you began. It's the biggest waste of money the county could ever expend.
It's it's certainly job security for somebody like you.
Well, that that paved road over that you talked about Goliad to be gate, how long is that? And who ripped that road up?
Oh, no, not that.
Goliad County.
Goliad County.
No, 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 who ripped up Carntons County?
Well, it wasn't even Carntons County, Mike, because I I built the road, I paid it.
But who really, I did have to put it back to base or collision. Jeffrey did?
Yes.
Jeffrey got the maintenance and did that?
Who did it?
And it's mild. I talked to him and told him I'd love to go fix it.
I don't want you to fix it.
But the thing is, is I'd go out there and I'd spend two hundred and fifty thousand on your road putting base and paving it.
It's not about my road, it's it's about having a plan for everybody's road. It's about knowing that, like she says, in ten years, these people that live on these roads have a hope that maybe one day it will be my road. You can do my road labs. Like I told them, I'll pay to do my road. When I get tired of it, I'll pay to do it. I don't need you or the government to do it.
Like I've said, every time I've been up here, bus routes and that plan that seventeen forty seven.
The bus route is a moving target. That's a, that's a catchphrase to get everybody's compassion. Bus routes move, they change.
That's right.
I wouldn't even chase bus route.
While I got them, that was one of the things when I got hired.
I sat here and they never told you bus routes, that was never an important deal. Nobody ever said bus routes. That Jeffrey Beatrix used to say bus route.
No, that was the plan when I got in that room, it was interviews, that was one thing.
Sat right there the whole time.
I want to remind you all something, just a minute, this is occupying a whole lot of time and we're getting nothing accomplished because.
Well, mine will though.
There's a bunch of hard heads.
I've sat here seven years, I've spent a lot of time.
I've sat here fifteen.
Yeah, when you get paid, see the difference is I don't get paid. This is free for me.
Part of this time is basically free if you realize how much I do. But neither here nor there, this isn't about me, I want to remind the court, fifteen years ago, we had an overall county budget of less than six million dollars. This is ridiculous. We've had a windfall and we aren't accomplishing tidily for what we've been fortunate. That's right. Throwing money down the drain. We need a plan for every department, needs to be accountable for the dollars they spend, not fluff their budget because I may not get it next year or spend it all because, oh, we're down to the last six weeks. I've already had a couple of departments calling and asking how much is left, I need to get this, I need to get that, do you need it? Well, no, but it's in my budget. You don't do that personally. We've got to operate this thing like a business. And when I first came in, I made that comment when Judge Pavelik was here and he very nicely looked at me and said, Lawana Casper, how many successful businesses have you operated? Well, irregardless of that, this county is not being a successfully operated business.
I mean, what was, what did the budget end of last year, what was the difference from original versus actual, budgeted versus actual?
As far as.
Expenditures.
Previous year or not the year where? I I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I can give you a printout, but.
Fifty million dollars last year the budget.
Well, I know that, but I don't know how much, if it, how, if it.
What the variance was.
But I think where we're getting caught up in all this stuff is, and one is that. I agree with what Scott or I don't know who said, well, maybe you said it, Shannon, but if if Mike needs direction, the court needs to provide it. One, I think every commissioner's got certain roads they want to get done in their precinct. And if you want to create a plan, every commission needs to go ahead and make their recommendation for a plan for their for their roads or whatever you want done. And then turn it over to the Road and Bridge guy to to formulate into the cost.
I would, surely I'd take one, one extra step to that, add just a little bit to that. As Lawana said, and she hit them, she hit it on the head, and this includes the Commissioner's Court, not just the departments. But the county, the county rain trust right here needs to have a vision of of where they want this county to go in the next two years, five years, ten years, thirty years, or whatever you want to go to. But some kind of a plan of direction to include Road and Bridge and every department in this county.
I I agree and 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 I think, and I think we ought to have a, you know, again, David, you may not agree, but we we almost need, other than an engineer, a a county planner of of some sort that that helps you line that. Somebody within the county to do something like that, that that can plan your five years and ten years, fifteen, of course, every year it's gonna change, but you just push that as you go. But I think we're getting caught up on these roads and stuff is that, you know, we. I for one, you know, limestone is fine, but to me, it's 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 not the silver bullet.
Well, it, because it's expensive.
It is.
Limestone, I have a five mile road through the middle of our ranch and and it was hauled out by an oil company and and it was a great road and 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 now it's deteriorated because it wasn't sealed properly. I mean, it it it's a good starting point, but if you if you go to Goliad or these other other counties, I I think where we get off track is we got a guy like Underbrink and he gets paid to build an expensive road. So the roads are gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars a mile.
Well, the one road I continue to look at, I go by and check it periodically, and that's the one that's south of the auction, north of the auction in Carntons City. It's one that goes by, that was paved by Sammy Smith that went right by his house. But it's a good road. It's still, it had no concrete put in it, but it's still a good functional road. Now, I look at a road on County Road one seventy where Marathon paved the road and it's starting now to deteriorate. We've only been done about a year.
Is that the truck, is it a truck traffic road?
Yes.
Well, see, that's what you have to think.
Both of them.
Both roads are truck roads. Well, my my contention is the truck traffic roads are going to get torn up and deteriorating. So the 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 unlogical thinking is to go where the roads aren't heavily used by trucks and and try to warp them in. So if you get those chip sealed, then then they can fall off of the maintenance now. And and you're not, you're not just chasing, like Mr. Yoder says, the truck traffic. Because the state chases the truck traffic and they can.
Shelby, leave me.
No, no, I I agree with your sense, guys, like I I like to get all the roads around the Shute area, quite frankly, all 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 dressed out and be done. You can forget about those other than just.
Well, you can move them down to a five year.
Yeah, other other than just.
Shredding.
Just shredding that, you know, basic maintenance. There's some roads in Davis precinct that are, to me, are the same way.
Same way, everything's just out.
But you know, the reason it's so personal for me and the halls and everybody that lives out in the country, just step outside and look at my truck. I mean, I go through that every time it rains, I can't wash my truck.
But it's also where the money comes from to build your EMS building. It's where the money came from to build the building we're sitting in, to restore the courthouse. That's where all the money's coming from. So and and those people don't really get fire protection, they don't get, they don't get EMS protection when the weather's bad. They don't, they don't get trash pickup, they don't, they don't get all these services that the people in town get. And the least you can do, I would think, from a compassionate standpoint, is to is to get a plan to to fix their roads and give them some hope.
But Shelby, you came down that road to come to my neighbor's house. You had a heart attack, remember that night? And you came rocking and rolling down that road at about one mile an hour. I mean, you were not traveling. And and I understand that, I mean, the road was bad, it was bad then, it improved a little bit, it goes down a little bit, just depends on weather. But if you if you go out and and go into, go into Kennedy or Carntons City, anybody that lives out in the county, doesn't matter where, and we have all this rain like we've had. You know, you know, they drive and drive dirty trucks and cars because. They 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 can, it'll stay clean while as long as they're in town, soon as they go home, they're done.
Well, the reason I would like for the commissioners to participate more, I've actually asked for committees, where you you've had two or three people, citizens from each precinct, serving in a committee board or something to help allocate. When you, we we had given this department a huge amount of money last year, an enormous amount of money. It was by far the largest amount of money given to any department with no oversight. There was, there was no oversight, we had one man calling shots, actually two, Mr. Underbrink, who's not even a taxpaying citizen. And then, you know, even the road you selected to trial with your polymers, your your sealers, you know, not, no resident lived on that. You were trying two different sealants and I said, who picked the road? Well, the guys picked the road, the boys picked the road.
You know.
But that's not oversight. And it's not oversight in my opinion, it's no offense, Mr. Gets, Mr. Wozniak or Mr. Underbrink, but Mr. Underbrink doesn't even live in this county. He doesn't suffer like we suffer the consequences for bad decisions. And and instead of one man telling, deciding how we're gonna spend twenty million dollars, I think there needs to be a few more brains put in on the, on the decision making.
When I went to the initial training session for commissioners of the newly elected, so you don't put your foot in your mouth too badly, session. I asked someone, one of the Texas Association of Counties people, I says, find me someone in a similar sized rural county that has a road unit system. I want to find out, you know, if it's successful, I want to find out what they're doing. And I was told, and and this is not a broadside of mine, but I was told the system will live or die on the administrator. If if you do not have a good administrator, it's not going to happen. Uh, if you have one, everybody will love it. Now, whether he's been given an adequate chance to perform or not, I'm I'm, you know, at this immediate moment, I'm not gonna pass judgment. But, you know, that having been said, what I would like to see, and I think Lawana probably brought this up subtly, is for these figures to be further refined and better explained. I realize most of these budgetary requests came in as rounded figures. But it's pretty obvious that we took last year's budget and put the same numbers down and for the most part, and maybe adjusted a little bit here or there, yonder. I would think that we might, the court might need to look at uh what's been spent on these items to date and see where we are, if we're at seventy five percent or sixty percent or where we are in that sort of a situation. So we would have an idea if these estimates for next year are realistic. And I am gravely concerned about what's being mentioned about the seventeen forty seven money that we may be in risk of losing it and therefore have the liability of another. Or have created the liability of a seven something million dollar uh project that we're not going to get any reimbursement for. So that's, that's the big issue and I think that needs to be addressed before this budget is approved.
Well, what I got here is I got the term, revenue expenditures that I presented to the court back in December. And my material budget was nineteen million, nine eighty five, nine eighty three, fifty five. And what it is, is the contractor's equipment assistance was a million dollars. And then I had one point nine million dollars was for the seal coat in which I came into the courts and moved that to Road and Bridge Special. So that gave me one point nine million dollars more into my limestone and and everything. And then I had two million, four hundred and fifty thousand in rehab on two eleven. That came in because of all the structures that were cracked underneath and the drainage, that that went up. And then limestone, I had two million, seven hundred, seventy three thousand, one hundred and seventy seven and fifty eight cents, came out to a total of eight million, one sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy seven and fifty eight cents. Now, on the bottom end of that money, same, same money, I had the bridge replacement that the crane went through. That was seventy five thousand, four hundred and ninety five dollars, seventy three cents. I got the county road three twenty six, the San Antonio River.
Is this the current budget?
Decapitation.
The bridge should have been paid for by the oil company and they were supposed to make a claim.
They're in the lawsuit, they're in the lawsuit getting it, but we had to pay to fix it, otherwise it would have been closed. And Commissioner's Court voted to go ahead and fix it, open it up.
We know how they vote, Mike. We know how they vote.
Okay, well, I'll just refresh you, because I did this already back then, I'm refreshing, I'm remembering. And then we've got the equipment in which was a million, ninety three, in which we placed all those trucks that had five hundred thousand miles on them.
Wait, wait, we spent two million dollars on equipment? You said a million.
One million, ninety three thousand, one dollar and five cents.
One, one point one million on equipment.
Hey, the judge is gonna have to leave the, in the form of, if it's almost new, if it court, if it provides everybody, I think, to be to have this discussion again come Friday.
We have set up for Friday.
You have a pretty heavy schedule on Friday.
Well.
The next Monday, one day, that's not too late.
We'll need to finish this discussion as well, maybe you can bring us some more information. Give us some numbers, better numbers.
Yeah.
And miscellaneous as well, I don't know, I'm just, I'm like, I can't speak to the court on this.
Well, what I'll do is I'll get miscellaneous and then I'll give you how many miles of limestone we have done in which we've got a map that we're gonna post in here and we're in the process of doing that. That way everybody can see how many miles of limestone we've done and where and everything of. But I, until it's completed, I don't want to bring nothing that's halfway done. I don't want to do that.
Last question, and and I know the judge needs to go. What's the difference between Road and Bridge and Road and Bridge Special? I know they're two funds, how are they allocated?
Road and Bridge Special is a special tax that we can collect, the court elected to collect. That tax multiple years ago, it's been in effect for several years. The Road and Bridge is funded out of our regular ad valorem, M and O.
But very much eight million dollars worth of this last year's budget was from the SIRs money, which was allocated reinvestment zone money according to seventeen forty seven, your rest is planned. That was why the reinvestment zones, each county set up their own. And that money, according to your county, who set up the whole county up in it, had to be spent on Road and Bridge. And that was the plan for the the legislation in the state of Texas because basically seventeen forty seven was designed by the one guessing. 1747 was designed by the oil and gas industry. And they pay taxes too. And they got tired of counties taking the money and spending it in frivolous ways and not putting it into the, the roads. So actually, the $8 million, believe it or not, is supposed to be overseen by a committee of how it is spent. Now, my view, the committee consists of three oil and gas representatives and two citizens.